The regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission is called to order on May 1st at 6:00 PM. Members of the public wishing to address the Planning Commission on items appearing on the agenda are requested to complete a speaker card, file it with the secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Cards are available in the lobby. Speakers should state their name and address for the record and limit comments to three minutes or less. Comments must be directed to the commission, not the audience. While Planning Commission is in session, all in attendance are expected to maintain order and decorum and to obey the orders of the Chair. Roll call, please.
Becker, Crabtree.
Yes.
Foster.
Here.
Luckman.
Here.
Nicklin.
Yeah.
Merk.
Here.
Nolan.
Here.
Could Commissioner Crabtree lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The consent calendar, oh, Public Communications, I don't see anyone here and I have no speaker cards, so we will move right along. Consent calendar is approved by a roll call vote on one motion. Should any member of the commission wish to discuss or disapprove an item, it must be removed from the consent calendar and considered as a separate item. We have minutes of the April 17th regular meeting of the Planning Commission.
I'll over approve the minutes.
I'll second that.
Epstein.
Foster.
Yes.
Luckman.
Yes.
Nicklin.
Yes.
Merk.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
Thank you. I do not see our MAC representative here tonight. No MAC meeting has been held since the last Planning Commission meeting and Vice Chair Nicklin is scheduled to attend on May 20th. And since we're on county business, I'd like to make an announcement that was in the Ojai Valley News today in the calendar section. On Tuesday, May 7th, there's going to be a wireless communication facilities workshop. The County of Ventura is currently drafting a wireless communication ordinance for the non-coastal, unincorporated areas within the county. An interactive public workshop will be held Tuesday, that's May 7th, from 6:30 to 8:30 PM at the Oakview Community Center, 18 Valley Road, Oakview. And this is to present an opportunity for the public to provide input for wireless communication facility designs, permit requirements, and development standards. If you want information, more information, take a look at the calendar section of the Ojai Valley News. There is a phone number, 654-2936, for more information. And that will affect people within the city limits in terms of the wireless transmissions in the area. So it's a, might be an interesting meeting to share opinions. And we're going to take our, our county, I mean, our city report out of order since Councilmember Lara is here and he has a limited time with us tonight. So would you like to, thanks.
Well, good evening. I was about to press that button for my microphone, but I realized that I don't need one. And I thank you for accommodating. Good evening, Commissioners, Chair, staff. And I just wanted, I have to go do a SCAD conference tonight, and so it's three hours and a half. I didn't want to get there too late. So I know it's a easy, simple agenda, but very important agenda because it talks about priorities, work plan, for, that we, that you guys recommend this council to really view. And I think lately, we've just been in, kind of figuring now, I think staff in general has been kind of getting more of a consensus of what the public is saying. And now I think it's time for us to start moving and prioritizing some things, like the housing element cycle. I know we still need to implement cycle four, but I know it is important for us to not be rushing cycle five. So I know that that's a priority. If there's any ordinance that you guys think are pertinent, I know the landscaping ordinance has been, is coming forward soon. But any other codes or ordinance that you guys think are pertinent, that we need to review, or that staff has recommendations, we, I really want to take to heart what you guys recommend because I want to start working with you guys a lot more. And again, and I can't keep saying it enough, you guys are out in the field, you guys are, are commissioned and are eyes out there. So I, I think that it's important to take your recommendations, start working with it. So other than that, I just, I'm curious to see what you guys talk about, and I've been taking notes, and if you guys go longer than expected, then I'm just going to view the rest at home when it's taped and viewed. So, thank you, guys. And I don't know if you have any questions for me in regards to anything? Yes?
Yeah, I've got one. I'd heard that, that the City Council unanimously overturned something that the Planning Commission had unanimously recommended. And it was the, the walls up on North Signal. So it sort of flies in the face of what you just said about this council taking our recommendations. And we need, you know, we need to kind of keep our pulse on, on what's happening at the higher level as well.
Yeah, and, and it is. And that's something that I brought up at the council meeting, is that I was really looking for the findings, what you guys were looking at to deny this variance. And, and I think that, that there's obviously a, Paul Blatz, Mayor Blatz, said that usually the Planning Commission is in a different seat where it's only looking at ordinance, and the City Council is kind of looking at the broader picture. But I, I think that it's important for all of us to be looking at the broader picture and not just be, it seems like we need to work together, we need to have the same mindset. And for some reason, we thought that this variance was different than the ones in the previous ones, and I know we're referring to the Mr. Daddy's wall. I, I think we were kind of looking at it as a case-by-case kind of thing, rather than what we had decided previously. I wasn't on the council when they decided Mr. Daddy's, but I thought that in this case, this variance, the findings were consistent to the neighborhood, and that the wall moving it back would kind of make it look un-uniformed, in a way, than keeping it consistent with the rest of the neighborhood. But it is important to have those findings the same because, and this comes again, interpreting the, the ordinance that's out there, making sure that we both understand it the same way. And I had a hard time kind of overturning it, and it is something that I struggled with. And I think that from now on, we should really be on the same page. And if, if there's some appeal, there has to be a better system, I think, that should view, should view the decisions by the commission. So I, I mean, I, I think what I'm trying to say in all is that there is some, some difference between the council and the commission, and I think that we need to get on the same page.
So you were looking for clearer, more clarity in the findings?
Yeah, more clarity.
If anything, we should have been more clear about how, in that case, they did everything wrong. They didn't do, if they had done like one thing right, we could have, or at least, I've got to talk for myself. I could have, I could have gone, yeah, it's, it's a wall, it's a big investment, and, and we're telling them to move it. And I really hated to do that, but I couldn't find one thing that they did right, you know? So there was, it was really difficult.
Yeah, and.
Obviously, we didn't make that, that wasn't clear enough to, to counsel what happened.
Yeah, and I think that's where we need to polish everything up, be on the same page because it was unanimous by the council, looking at the findings, that this was a variance that was acceptable. And that's where there's a misinterpretation of, is the variance appropriate or not? And if it's not, we need to start getting to the point where we have to understand, the council needs to listen, also the commission, what they're recommending. And I think that if it comes up again, I think it'll be, I think we should deal with it a little bit differently. Well, obviously, variants are case-by-case, and we don't want them to be coming up. And I know Chair Luck, Luckman said when she went to a conference, variants are actually really rare. And we've been having a lot in Ojai. And why, I'm not sure if our ordinance that are outdated, if we need to really look at them, if we needed, if we need to treat ordinance differently in different districts of the city, because there's just, the arbor lot is not the same neighborhood as this neighborhood on Signal, or Signal is in the same neighborhood as VCU. So I think that we need to start looking at these things and, and get a better idea of, of how do you understand these ordinance and how to apply them, and how the findings relate, and be on the same page. So I think it is important, and I think that you bring up an important issue, you bring an important point, and it is a valid question to ask us as councils. Me personally, I just thought that it was consistent to the neighborhood and that the finding actually was appropriate. And I thought that moving it back, it would do damage to that oak tree that was there. So it was various things like that. I have to go back and look at my notes, but it is important for us to sit down and really compare notes and see what the difference is, because that's how you get teamwork, that's how you get things going more efficient, I think, in my personal opinion. That's how we work together, and we just override your decision and say, you guys are wrong. It's, it's more than that. We really need to communicate with you guys why we thought it was in, it should be overturned, so.
I have just a comment on that particular issue, and some other that have come up. And, you know, I agree with Commissioner Crabtree. That came to us, that project came to us twice. That wall was started, the building official went out and notified the client that they needed a permit, but that they were also in the public right-of-way, which is an encroachment, and that they needed to stop work and come in and get a permit. That property owner went ahead and put the wall up anyway, didn't follow it to code. You also received a letter from the Public Works Department regarding, that they would not like to see the wall in the public right-of-way. And it came to us twice, and the applicant even admitted that they blew it. They also didn't hire a licensed contractor to do the work. So, and I understand, I'm not trying to be accusative or anything, but I think what really needs to come back is, like, we looked at our ordinances, the ordinance was clear, and as far as a variance goes, there is a description under a variance as to, if you meet the certain criteria, then potentially, we could have given them a variance, but they didn't meet that. So we really need some clear communication and direction from the City Council, not only on that project, but on some other ones that have come through. Because I find, I find it very confusing, and as a commissioner, I'm a little perplexed as to, I really don't understand why that applicant was given a variance. So I do, I, I would like you to take that back, and I know we're going to be having a workshop, and I'm hoping that some of those issues can be addressed.
And, and it is important, and if you guys are still confused, and, and we're still confused sometimes of the findings that you guys found, we weren't clear why those findings were made. So I think there should be an open dialogue and clarity and direction, because that is a valid question. And, and looking at it, I, I think that now we should focus on also, not only having that dialogue, but seeing if the ordinance are confusing, if they, if they can't be universal through the city, how are we going to handle it? And I think that, that's where we also need guidance from you guys, is if we're going to do that, where do you guys recommend us to look? I know that there's been suggestions already by city, by residents in the city, maybe we should have an appeals board and have somebody look at this, or, or, or maybe we should have a district on different neighborhoods in the city where we could maybe apply the ordinance differently. So I think that, just in general, I think most of the ordinance are outdated, they haven't been looked at. I think that's part of the problem, too. Me being in this new, I'm trying to understand all the ordinance and variances and encroachment and other options that there are. And, and if, and if we're not being clear, there just should be a, a mechanism out there where we should be open to asking these questions and having a discussion about it, so.
So, and another comment in your, based on your response, I don't, there wasn't any confusion, or at least I didn't have any confusion, being on the commission and making the vote that I made, and I think I can speak for my fellow commissioners on that. The confusion that I have is, I don't understand where the City Council is coming from. And basically, I felt like everything was very, for the most part, very clear-cut, as far as the ordinance goes, on this particular project. But I do agree with you that in some other areas, there may be some latitude that, or some boundaries need to be set, like, you know, what does a certain statement mean within an ordinance or a code, so that staff knows, okay, what are my boundaries, where can I go, what's my latitude? And the same with us, and the same with City Council. And I think you were referring to that, and I do agree that, that's something we need to look at.
Yeah, and if I remember correctly, I mean, we weren't really looking at the process, what they did in general, where they do things legally or illegally. We were basically, at least I was coming from a view, and I wish I had the material in front of me, because I was referring that night to what a variance is, what the findings are, what the premises were, what the provisions and everything, I was looking down on it. And basically, I was looking at it as a whole. Do they, are they gonna, are there other people in that neighborhood with the same type of wall? Is it, is it consistent as a whole? That's how I was looking at it, and I wasn't really looking at how they did or why they did it, and, or if, you know, variance are case-by-case, or if there was another case beforehand, you know, why aren't we being consistent? Because a variance says, be, do it case-by-case, it doesn't set precedent, so.
I think it, you know, I hate to go to, go polemic on it, but it's like, our, it's, it's a choice between anarchy or government, because like, all the, all the rules were, were flaunted. That was the problem. And if, if, and it relates to the rest of our agenda, where we're going to talk about which things should we work on, you know? Maybe we should work on the fact that the citizens, there's a, there's, there's a culture of just ignoring the rules.
Yeah, and you're right. We should do a better job at not letting them get away with it. And if they do do it illegally, I mean, there's fines for that, and they should pay him, or other ways. But I, I do understand that obviously, there's a difference between the commission and the council. And I agree, it's clear, because we overturned it. It's, that, that I'm not denying. I think that we should really get on page and really communicate and tell you guys where we come from as a council, what, and also start taking your recommendations more seriously. Well, not that we didn't take it seriously, I, I, where we're coming from, our vision compared to your vision, I think that maybe we should just have a, part of the workshop being that, seeing where our differences is, and if you guys need more clarity on why we overturned it, I think that is a good starting point. I think it would give the council a time for them to give your guys' point of view, and you guys give us your point of view, and maybe that's where it all starts, and we could evolve into something that we could work out and understand. But it is, it is really important, and I know that I haven't, haven't had any conversations with any of you, why I decided to overturn that. And it is, there's no conclusion to it, and there needs to be some conclusion understanding, so that next time when, if something similar happens, you understand where we're coming from. It just seems like we were totally disregarding what you guys are recommending, so. I think it is important, so.
I also wanted to try to add and say that I think this is a top priority issue, because somebody else is going to come up there at the podium with another project and another situation, and they're going to say, well, they did it, why can't I do it? And we, I, we need some answers from, I need some answers from City Council.
Okay, well, I mean, well taken, and that's something that I think we should have an open dialogue and have, and it's a number of things that need to be fixed, and it's, nothing's perfect. So I do understand that, I'm, I'm thinking about the process of how this got here, I mean, what we could have done to prevent it, and, and what should have been the right steps to do it. So, but it does, it, it does need to be opened up and discussed.
I also have a recommendation. A couple dialogues back, I had said, you know, that I was confused by the, the vote of City Council, and then you were saying there was some confusion, too. And, for instance, we've had projects come to us with incomplete applications, so to speak. They'll come, they don't have their samples, they don't have, there's missing information. And typically, what we do is we'll say, we're going to have to continue this item, or you're going to have to come back, and you need to bring this back, because we can't make a decision without that information. And I think in that instance, if there was confusion or something like that, I'm hoping that City Council would say, we need to do a little more research into this, we want, we need to reschedule this, or we'll come back to it, not that we're dropping it, or let's get it on a different agenda. But take the time, and if you need to come back and, for more clarity, and talk to staff, or, you know, go back and look at the findings, I hope the council will do that.
Yeah, and that's more of a staff thing, I think, more of a process and more procedural. And me as a council member, me personally, I, I'm a, if, if your applications are coming incomplete, then we shouldn't be bringing them here, because not only are we wasting your time, which is valuable, we're wasting the applicant's time, we're wasting staff time, we're not being efficient, so that definitely should be something. I know it's been brought up, and Rob Mullein has addressed this issue, and I think we are in the works of trying to fix it and having it more of an easy, friendly application where we advise the applicant, you know, you need to have this in, and your drawings, and you're a surveyor, and et cetera. I think that is being addressed right now, but it is worth, it is worth discussing, because it has happened recently, I think a couple of times within the last year or so. So it is something, and, and we do value your time and your time that you put in the commission, so we don't want to waste it and waste anybody else's time, so it is a good point. So, and like I said, I, I think that I am really excited to hear what you guys are going to recommend, or what you think is high priority. I think it is, it is important for all of us to be on the same page, not just this commission, other commissions also. And it takes everybody putting in their fair share in order for everything to start working more effectively. So I do take your recommendations. Like I said, I struggled with the two, the variance. Fortunately, I don't have all my notes in front, that's why I don't know exactly where I'm coming from, but it is something that I will provide for you guys, so. Okay, any more questions?
I just want to say, I was actually pleased with the council's action. I thought you guys made a common sense determination in that case, rather than just strictly applying the rules like we did here at the Planning Commission, so I really liked that wall, I'm glad you kept it up. I think what you're seeing here is a real need for us to really look at our whole general plan overall, and really have something that makes sense on a neighborhood-by-neighborhood basis in Ojai. Because what you're seeing is we're trying to take this sort of one general set of zoning rules and apply it all across the city, and we have really different conditions in different places, and that's why we end up with all these variances in different places. You know, certain places, all the lots are substandard, so anything anybody does there, they're going to require a variance. I think, we talked about this some years back, but nothing's ever really come of it. I think it would be fantastic to really have a whole kind of community workshop where we say, okay, what do we want, do we want the city to look like? You know, it gets back to that same problem we have with the housing element, where people are like, oh my God, we can't build any more houses here. Well, we need to have some sort of strategy going forward, like, do we want more people to come live here, or do we want to just say, okay, this is it? This is, you know, this is all there is to Ojai right now, and, and nobody else can be here, or something, you know?
No, definitely, and it is something.
You know, I mean, it's, it's like, we don't have that, that overall kind of strategy where we, where we have a clear sense of what we want as a community going forward. I think if we had that kind of vision, it would, it would make a lot of these other things a lot simpler to, to deal with, because now we're kind of struggling to work against all the codes that we have in place and all the, the problems that people have, trying to make all that stuff work.
Yeah, and I appreciate your comments. It really shows that we, I think we all care and that we all are striving towards that goal, and how we're going to do it. I feel, they're very valid questions, and I think that we need to answer them, and I feel like if you guys didn't care, or if we didn't care, we wouldn't be asking and having this conversation right now. So I really hope that we could go forward, and I'm sure Rob is taking note of this, and, we need to start being held accountable and, and coming through with some of these things, so I do appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. All right, our next item is discussion item, Community Development Department Priorities. And we have a list of.
Madam Chair, I have a brief staff presentation, if you want me to do that.
Yeah, so would you like to do that, present that?
It'll be quick. The commission's aware, you'll, and we were always, or we were just talking about this, you're going to have a joint meeting with the City Council on May 14th, and that's going to be at 6:00 PM. It's a special meeting of the City Council, and a joint meeting with the Planning Commission. And this is an opportunity to discuss issues of interest or concern to the commission, as well as the departmental priorities for the coming year, and actually beyond the coming year. And we actually started to get into this discussion just now. But you'll, you'll only have an hour, and I think one of the suggestions that maybe Commissioner Nolan was getting at is that there may be more to discuss than can be achieved in an hour. And one thing that, that you may want to convey to the council is that it might be good to set up another meeting with them, or to, to flesh out some of these issues in more detail. So the, the staff report talks about the department's priorities, but it's also this workshop, joint workshop with the council is also an opportunity for the commission to bring up any of these issues that you think really ought to be at least introduced to the City Council to get, to try to get a little bit more on the same page. And you just talked about a couple of those just now with Councilmember Lara. What I heard in that discussion was, was certainly there, there may be a need to talk about the variances that have been granted, and, and some of the appeals that have come through City Council, that might be an item of, of interest to discuss. And then this concept of having a community by community, either like neighborhood plans or something that has development standards and guidance that are specific to, that reflect the individual aspect of so many of our, our different neighborhoods. I will say, that's a, that's a pretty large undertaking, and that's, that's, I mean, it's analogous to a general plan update, in terms of the level of, of resources that that might take. So if, and I know it's been, it's been on the wish list for a long time, so it's just, it's just something that's going to take a policy decision to, yes, we want to devote the resources that we need to, to this, and that's part of the work plan, obviously, for my department. I think the council is well aware of what has been achieved in the last 13 or 14 months since, since I've come on board, but some of the major priorities are listed in the staff report, I'll just highlight a few of them. Planning and processing, or processing, planning applications and building applications in a, in a timely fashion, trying to do as much of that in. Um, trying to do as much of that in-house. I was amazed, I just got from Sheri kind of a rundown on how many building permits we issue on a annual basis, how many planning permits we issue on a, on an annual basis. Both of those, each of those last few years have been about three hundred each. For a city of this size, three hundred building permits and three hundred planning permits is an amazing volume to come out through, through a department, especially with the staffing that we have. So just that is a huge part of our workload and our priorities is just, uh, pushing those things through. Um, Sheri does a really great job with the, uh, with both planning and the building, but especially on the building side. She's really good about working with our contractors to, and Brian, when he was here, about getting things moving quickly because it's time is money for, um, for applicants. So we are processing lots and lots of applications every year. And that's, uh, we've actually seen an uptake as, as I've, I've mentioned. I mean, it's been about three hundred each over the last few years. That's coming out of a recession. So now that we're getting into a little bit better, uh, economic climate, that's probably going to increase. Um, the housing element for two thousand and sixty, two thousand and fourteen has been a huge work effort over the last twelve months. And as well as the, the implementation ordinances, the phase one and phase two, which are now, uh, both at the city council. And, and hopefully we'll have action, final action on one of those in, in May and the first, uh, public hearing uh, at their second meeting in May as well. Um, we've done, we've, we worked quite a bit on the local amendments to the two thousand and ten building code. Uh, that process took so long that we're now in a, in a, uh, situation where the two thousand and thirteen building code is upon us. So we made the decision that it was, uh, it was, um, more efficient to hold off on those local amendments and just, uh, take the, the hard work that's gone into the two thousand and ten building code, local amendments, and bring those back up when it's time to consider the two thousand and thirteen building code. We did the single use carryout bag ordinance. Uh, we got the exterior lighting ordinance pretty close to the finish line, although that's not quite at the finish line. That's going back to the city council for some revisions in May. Uh, we simplified the process for establishing a historic landmark, uh, including reducing that application fee to zero to really incentivize that, uh, for applicants. Um, we've done goal setting with the historic preservation commission and we've, and we've reestablished the city's geographic information system. Um, and that's going to be a, a higher priority over the next six to twelve months of really getting a, a G I S system that's, that we're utilizing on a regular basis. We're using in our staff reports, we're, uh, printing out things for applicants all, uh, and, and incorporating the complete streets data that's been, uh, collected over several, several months and several hours and days of, of hard work from that subcommittee. Um, uh, we also shifted Sheri to a forty hour a week position. And that was to, um, allow a, uh, consistent and, um, and, uh, have, have some consistency at the counter, make sure that we're open five days a week. Same person in, in charge of it, same answer. They're not dealing with different people on a regular basis. Or, uh, worse, having me try to answer questions on the fly and with all of my other responsibilities. Um, so that, I think that's been a huge help. And, and now Sheri, as you know, is now on a eight to five schedule. So she's here even more at the counter on a regular basis. Uh, we've instituted a new code enforcement reporting and tracking system that I think both the commission and the council has been, have been, uh, complimentary of. We've done a really, uh, good job getting many of, uh, kind of the lingering code enforcement cases taken care of. Where, um, the new ones come in, we try to address as, as quickly as we can, given our, our limited resources. And I think that the follow-up and documentation is better now than it's been in probably, I don't know, a long time. Um, we have, uh, put into place a monitoring in the counter activity. I, I just mentioned the volume of permits that we're getting, but we also have a tremendous amount of phone calls, emails, um, in-person visits just with questions. And, and, uh, some, some of that's preparatory to an application coming in. Some of that is, is, uh, just information that people are, are looking for. We've done, um, we've revised the, uh, the planning application forms, most of the forms. Uh, Sheri and I went through and, and tightened them up, made them a little clearer for applicants, made sure that we're getting better applications so that we don't run into the issue of, of bringing forth projects that really aren't ready for planning commission review. Um, we've, um, we've implemented a application intake checklist very recently so that whatever, the initial submittal, we try to get as complete as possible before we even take it in. If it's missing something major, um, we, we kindly ask the applicant to bring us those major missing items at the outset so that, um, so that we can get going as, as quickly as possible at the staff level and the processing. Uh, we have revised the city, the city's planning fee schedule. Last year, we took a lot of fees that were deposit based and made them set fees. We're taking an even deeper cut at that for this coming budget cycle, uh, which is going to be going to the council this month. Uh, so a lot of the other fees that, um, we've heard a lot of objection from applicants on. And, um, some of the smaller deposit based cases are all going to set fees, like director's exemptions, for example. We already did the conceptual review, uh, a previous one. We're, um, we're simplifying the signage fees that we talked about last meeting. Um, and we're contemplating, uh, we're recommending reducing some of the appeal fees to, um, to make it a little bit of user-friendly, um, process. Um, what else? Um, so that's what's happened in the last twelve or thirteen or fourteen months. What I think are, as, as far as I understand it at this point, the future priorities, I have a whole list in there. And there's a list of, what is that, almost twenty bullet points? So it's really clear that, and I won't read them all, but it's, it's, it's very clear that with our staffing, we are not going to get through all these. If you try to do too much, uh, all at once, you're, you end up, if you take on too many things, you, you don't do a good job with any of them. So you kind of have to take small bites and, and tackle a few of these at a time. So then it's a measure of prior, prioritization. I do think that the hiring of a part-time assistant planner, uh, which we actually finalized the job advertisement for today, and we'll have that out later this week, will help, uh, quite a bit. We definitely have to keep going on the next housing element cycle to meet that, um, that fairly challenging, um, deadline so that we're not subject to a, a midpoint review, a four-year review, and when we stay on an eight-year review cycle. Um, but there's a whole host of other things in here. The, um, second unit amnesty program, the allowance for residential mixed use and commercial properties, the sustainability-related development standards, local amendments to the two thousand and thirteen building code, the establishment of an appeals board for building permits and building code interpretations, establishment of a informal appeal process, water efficient landscape ordinance, formula business ordinance revisions, tree protection ordinance revisions, uh, cleaning up, or not cleaning up, but revising our zoning code so that it, uh, does a more logical, uh, treatment of walls, fences and hedges than what we have on the books right now. Similarly, for structures in the rear yard, that's another zoning code amendment revisions. The sign regulations that we talked about last time, um, we'll have to implement the new exterior lighting ordinance if that gets adopted and, and we have a voluntary compliance outreach program. These are all things that a staff of maybe ten planners could probably, would be required to get done in a year. So we have to go about, um, prioritizing these. And, and that's what I'm looking for from both the planning commission and from the city council. Uh, and then there are a few others in there. The special use permit process for transient rentals has been out there for a while in the parking lot, as Rob Clark calls it. Um, amendment to the zoning code to provide a review process for priority historic sites, review, revision and refinement of the air traffic and water, uh, quality or water capacity constraint studies and designation of heritage trees. So there's all these, um, really, you know, great projects and initiatives and just three of us to try to do what we can, uh, to get, to get through these. Um, so tonight's discussion is to help, um, you know, is an opportunity for the commission to say, these are the things that we think should be priorities as well as these are a few of the topics, other topics other than work plan that we, we want to at least introduce at the joint meeting. So it's kind of an open discussion. I'm going to turn it over to you. The last thing I just want to note is that it may be helpful, because that list was so overwhelming with the twenty bullet points, I have attachment A, which is kind of prioritize what we can do in six months bites. Uh, that looks at the next, the, um, the current six-month period, January to June two thousand and thirteen, the next six months and then the first half of January and then future priority. And the rankings are one, two and three for high priority, medium priority, and let's do it if we have time priority. So, uh, there's a lot going on. There's going to be a lot going on in the future. And we're, um, you know, we're trying to, trying to do as much as we can right without doing too much and doing it, um, wrong. So that's, that's all I have. And I, what I didn't have on here was the, uh, the whole neighborhood, um, specific or neighborhood plans. That's, that's not on this, this table and it probably should be added. Uh, it might be on there and is, is kind of an outgrowth of the visioning workshop, but it's really a specific thing that's come up, uh, previously. So with that, I will, uh, take any questions and, um, I think the discussion can be a, a Q and A or however formal or informal the commission wants.
Thank you. And I'd like to say that I think the list of things that have been accomplished in the last twelve to fourteen months is impressive. That was a lot. So let's open up the discussion. Questions, discussions, comments?
I wonder if we have any input from the public here.
Pardon me?
Wonder if we have any input from the public here?
Did we want to open this as a public? Okay, I see someone out there from the public. Mr. Daddy?
Good evening. Um, things are moving along. There are a lot of things being done. Um, so now I'll get done with the good stuff. We'll go to the real ugly stuff. We had a visioning program a couple of years ago and not one of you commissioners were there. As a matter of fact, they were all day long Saturday and Sunday at the inn, followed up by a separate meeting, which was an entire Saturday. Not a single commissioner of any of the commissions within this community attended that. Unbelievable. So if we wonder why we're going down different paths. Well, we had the citywide visioning. We had a two-day citywide visioning to where we planned and put all the things on the list and the bullet points and what we were going to do and none of the.
I was there for that.
The one at the Ojai Valley Inn?
No, the one at the.
That was the, that was the follow-up. We did two days prior at the Ojai Valley Inn. What I would hope is that we wouldn't repeat that. I would hope that the council and the commissioners are all together, all on the same page for a change. I would also hope that when we take these five, ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty bullet points, that's a lot of bullet points. They're going through them as fast as they can. That just stops somewhere along the line. The commission has some priorities, the city has some priorities and the citizens have some priorities. I've yet to see the citizens ask what their priorities are. Is it trash can enforcement? Is it transient occupancy? Is it these vacation rentals? Is it the neighborhood? If, if it were up to me, I would do the neighborhood first. I mean, to me, that's the most important thing because we have these twenty-two or twenty-three separate neighborhoods we've identified through the forestation plan. We already have most of the matrix. We just need to go put them in there. And again, as Mr. Merck says, we can't expect one rule to fit everything because it makes most of the people non-compliant for each rule and then it just drives more variance. We've got to stop chasing our tails sooner or later and figure out, again, as Rob said, what we want this community to look like. And we're going to need the city input to figure out what we want this to look like or that we're just going to have variance after variance after variance. Actually, I stopped by to see somebody building a wall today. I said, wow, hell, how can you build this wall five foot tall with, within forty feet of the street? He goes, well, there's a tree here, so we don't have to do it that way. I said, you're kidding me. He said, yeah, but they're going to make me do it forty-two feet up here. And I just looked at that. It could have picked anybody to tell that to but me. I was stunned. So I think that generating all these artificial rules that don't fit in a real world neighborhood, that don't fit in our little town, is something that people have been asking the commission for years to do. Revise the zoning, revise the code, revise what's allowed, streamline things. And it just seems like we kind of go back to square one over and over and over again. And you get, I know you get different mixed results because I watch them. You know, I watched Annika Grun where Katrina said, we haven't given out a variance in six years. And Mr. Becker says, nobody told us that, right? I mean, I don't know where the communication is between everybody. But it seems like we got teething problems and it seems like we need to get this thing together somehow. I don't know what it is. I mean, if it will help, do you need the community to get together and ask for some workshops so we can be involved and tell you what we think is the most important thing? Would it help if you've got some subcommittees? I think Complete Streets has done a hell of a job. Absolutely. So what got finished today? That handicapped curb cut at Valley Rio is finished and people can use that. And that is a Complete Streets. And it didn't have to go through building and planning and it didn't have to go through city council. It didn't go through this unit. It went through a subcommittee. So why aren't we using more subcommittees that can streamline and get things done on their own? We have very competent people in this community. Let's get some things done. How, how long ago was it, Paul? We were seriously standing up there talking about that thing, looking at it. Ninety days or less. Have we run it through the regular up and down the channel? Three years. So I mean, we can get things shortcut. You got smart people. We need a lot more subcommittees. We got way too much work for an individual group to do. They can disseminate. You guys can take some of these things on. Take the most important three or four things that take the most important time. And if it sees stupid hedges and walls and fences and setbacks, then maybe that's the priority. Because if that's what you're watching the most of, maybe you have to go out and eat that frog first. It won't be pleasant, but maybe you just get that done. Anyhow, thank you for your time. I really appreciate the work you do. Thank you very much on the Complete Streets Committee. You guys put a lot of work in there. We're seeing some efforts. We're seeing hedges cut down. We're seeing all the commercial units where we're getting the ninety-degree radius where you can actually see if you're on Correo Street, see if you're on Valley Rio, you can see right outside here where we've lowered some of those hedges. And then I'm pretty sure Complete Streets is going to be back with a request or a question because we've lost institutional memory. Why can you park in front of the Oaks in front of the library on a street that has the same width going westward for two more blocks with no parking there? So what is so sacred about the next block where the, where the telephone utility building is and a couple of other units that requires no parking? Where a quarter of a block away, everybody can park? Those are the problems facing this city. I think they need to be addressed and I think we need to ask the citizens, what's the most important thing? I really appreciate the work you folks do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, do we have any, I don't see anyone else out there who would like to speak? Do we need a motion to close the public hearing? No, because it's a discussion. Okay. All right. All right, commissioners. Questions, comments, ideas?
I have an easy one. My suggestion is our priority ought to be to, uh, I think all, most of these things come down to the fact that we have a very complicated process. And I don't think any of us, other than maybe to a much larger degree Sheri and Rob and the people and staff, they, they understand it. They try and make sense of it a lot. Uh, we could actually get our hands around it. The stuff that I've read over the years I've been here is ridiculous. And the stuff that's coming down from the state is even worse. And I'm really concerned about some of the things that are coming down the pike, including the landscape thing. That really concerns me. That what the requirements are going to be, that, you know, you have to have this person stamp it. And, you know, these things are just, what we do today is going to piss people off ten years from now. It really will. So what we're doing right now is so, so important. It's just like we did last year with the building codes. And I think I said the same thing then. What we're doing then is going to affect people perhaps when we're not even here. And it doesn't look too good because we're already having trouble with what we have. So my suggestion is there's no way we'll get all that done. And we've done this year after year, John, a lot longer than me. And I've said this over and over again, you cannot have a list this long. It will not happen. We need to have two priorities for, in a given year, and we should accomplish those two priorities. There are smaller things that we can handle ourselves as they come across, but those are usually active issues like the building codes and the landscape and the complete street stuff. That doesn't really fall under the category of, of these priorities. I think what we need to do, I might personally think we need to do is to lobby city council for one priority. And that is to hire a full-time equivalent to do nothing but to straighten out our. out our zoning codes and our ordinances, and to make them reasonable, readable, rational, and simple to apply so that we could all pretty much know what the codes are and what they mean and what it is. So someone comes and says, "You know, I live in downtown Ojai, my garage is on the zero lot line, you know, and I want to remodel, what issues do I have?" Well, you don't have any. You're on a, you're on a shotgun lot that's in the downtown area, you can be on the zero lot line because the house is already there, you don't have to move the garage over five feet, you know, we can kinda spit it off like that. Yeah, the fees for doing that are $1,500 if it's more than so many square feet, these are the type of inspections you can inspect. It comes in in the city, it gets out because it's simple, the staff doesn't spend a lot of time on it, we don't spend very much time on it, and everyone's happy. Because the reality is, and you all know this, we all know this, our fees are so high, our process, although I know it's better, is so, not so good that people are simply just doing stuff without permits all over the town. They don't want to come in here. They don't want to go to the counter. They just simply are getting it done by themselves, and it's happening everywhere. So, I mean, this is, I, I really feel like, you know, we've gotta do our housing element because we don't want to get stuck with what the state tells us. I think we gotta, that's gotta be, our, the staff has to spend time on that, we gotta get that out of the way and done. And number two, I think we need a full-time equivalent, and then this stuff will shake out once we get that person on board because you're gonna go through everything and you're gonna make it kinda flow. And there's probably some logic between where you start and where you end, but I think we kinda know what it is based on the work that some of the subcommittees have already done. We kinda know, we just need someone to get in there and spend literally their whole job should be on cleaning this code up and making things readable and reasonable and rational.
Yes. And I think, you know, John brought this up earlier, and I had made some notes for our joint meeting in a couple of weeks, and the first thing I wrote at the top of my page was about a vision. And I, I know we had had a couple of joint meetings with city council, you know, over the last, what was it, a year and a half ago? And we just barely scratched the surface, if that. And I know as a commission, Stephen, you actually were chair at that time, you know, we came and we had a presentation, and I don't know if anyone other than us got it or understood where we were coming from. So I think having that vision is so important, and it needs to include the community, and that's where, you know, the neighborhoods fall into place, and, you know, Bob Daddy had brought it up. We did that when we did the community forest management plan. It may not be perfect, but we did it by neighborhood, and so each neighborhood had its, an identity, and that's what we worked from. And we've also discussed doing this in Complete Streets, and once again, we're gonna apply for this grant, da-da-da-da, and hopefully we're gonna get to do that. But, you know, I've been thinking about what, you know, I'm very positive that, you know, maybe we will get the grant, but if we're not awarded that grant, do we not do anything and wait because we need to hire some consultant? Or maybe as a subcommittee, and it's a huge project, maybe we could actually do that and actually go and conduct like a community charrette, and then if we need to do smaller ones within these neighborhoods and find out, you know, what do they want on the lots, what's gonna happen in the public right of way, and it kind of be an all-inclusive gathering of information. And then with that information, that's, to me, is like, okay, now we have the vision, we've gathered this data, then we can come up with a, a plan, a revision to the general plan or the ordinance or the codes where we need to do it. Some things may be fine, but I, I agree with you that we, at some point, we need to let us start going through it, pairing it down, making it, bringing it up to date if it needs to happen, and making it more user-friendly or understandable. And then it can be implemented. But I think we need to go through all, we need to go through, through the steps, and we haven't really done that, and I think that, to me, is some of the confusion that I've had with city councils. I'm not sure where they're coming from, and I know I've talked to several, and they say, "Oh, well, I think we're on the same page," but I'm not sure that we are. And that's not a bad thing, I think it's a good thing that, that we have the intention and want to do that. So I think, you know, it's probably gonna be a lot of work on our part if, if we're committed and we want to do it, but it may be the only way it happens. And I agree that by having, you know, Rob has a part-time assistant planner in here, maybe we really do need the full-time. This is a lot of work. There's a lot of stuff here that needs to happen, and I agree that, you know, between the two of you, I mean, it's just way more than...
It's pretty high-level work.
Yeah, it is.
I mean, one of the concepts to bring on assistant planners to free up some of my time to tackle some of these initiatives, because I, I think it takes at least a senior planner level to, to handle some of the things that we're talking about, if not a really sharp, if we're talking about cleaning up the zoning code, that's probably not even a staff person, that's probably a consultant that specializes in that. And so that's a big-ticket budget item, but, but it's, if it's a priority, then, then like you said, it's, it's a lobbying effort, it's, it's a policy call, so... Or, or, you know, we could get a really sharp senior planner that might be able to do that, or, you know, it's a matter of shifting more stuff off my plate, but, you know, we have a real, we have a tiny city staff for what we accomplish, and, and we've pared down through the recession and, you know, some, and now we're, I guess we're staffing back up a little bit, but the, if, if, unless we take really realistic bites, we're gonna have to get more resources. And I know that the, one of the council's main priorities is paving streets. We've had 20 years of deferred maintenance on streets, so it's like every dollar saved in the city is, is, you know, can go to a couple of square inches of asphalt, so...
Well, you know, it's, it gets back to the same thing, you know, we've, we've just keep going in a circle. One of the issues we have at the planning counter is there's a lot of things that really should be over-the-counter permits. They're straightforward, they're done, and we should actually set, when you do the report on how many permits we've processed over a year, they should be segregated because, you know, good examples are probably fences. Pools are a great example. Pools can be an over-the-counter permit. They're all engineered, no deck, everything is straightforward, I mean, all the work's done. It's easy. A pool is an easy, easy, easy permit to process.
Our current building official or acting building official said that that's what contractors will tell you every time, and you go to any city, they're not over the counter, but they do take us one day.
Yeah, they're simple.
One day.
Well, that's essentially an over-the-counter permit, one day. It's done quickly.
Well, see, when you say over the counter, I think you mean they're standing there, I type it up and give...
No, 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 no.
Which I do many, I do electrical and rear roofs...
Right.
Right there at the counter.
Well, they're, they don't need, they don't need engineering review if they're doing a, you know...
One day is not that long to wait.
No, it's not. And I'm not saying that you should get the permit in one day, I'm just saying it's an over-the-counter type process, it's quick. You have to fill out some paperwork, you might have to come back the next day and pick it up. You know, we, we, the problem is we do so many things in the city that are really miniscule, but they take your time. And so what happens is we don't actually, we're not using your time efficiently, and that's what you're talking about now. You know, I don't like the idea of hiring a career institutional, institutional person to do this job. I don't. Because what we're gonna end up with is what we have now. What we need to do is hire someone that can create the vision along with the planning commission, right? And so you take everything one at a time, you say, "Okay, we're gonna work on this segment of it. What do we want as a community?" Okay, the, you know, we want neighborhood planning, you know? How do we handle fences and hedges and things like that? Well, we can figure that out in a couple hours for a neighborhood, it's not hard. Then you get that idea and that vision, and then you give it to someone that can do the legal, you know, wording of it so it accomplishes the vision, right? Ultimately, you know, a good 50% of what comes over the desk should probably be over the counter, and there's a fee for it. And guess what? You raise revenue, you've got a happy customer, and they've got a little brochure that tells them everything they need to do before they even have to do it. The more difficult things are the things that cost more, but those generally are gonna be larger remodels, major commercial projects, things that are much more complicated that require the review and things like that. Those do require the attention of, you know, you, staff, well, not really staff, but outside consultants, or if we get big enough enough projects, we have our own people and staff. But we are so far from that, we are literally playing in the mud. And it's, it's not good. Well, you may not agree, Sherry, but you know what? The people that talk to me that are out there doing this stuff, they're not happy. And I know, I know you're surprised by that, but the reality is they don't like the process. And it, it, it doesn't matter. What, what it matters is they're coming in, and the sign's a great example. "Hey, I'm putting up a little sign. I want to start my business. This took me two months. Why?" And then you got the guys that are, you know, you got half the people that have signs downtown that never did get a permit, correct? Yeah, correct. They never got a permit. So the guys, you know, people are going, "My sign's just better looking than that one over there, that guy never got a permit." And we're like, "Well, yeah, that's just the way it works right now." So it's, it's, it's not, you know, it's the perception that you don't get at the counter that counts. It's when people go home and go, "Did you really enjoy the process? Did it work out for you? Was it quick and easy?" And they may love you, and, you know, they certainly had a good experience with you, but they're like, "No. I just wanted a sign up. And, you know, somehow I didn't comply, whatever. I'm just wanting to open my business. Or I just wanted to redo my front yard. I'm trying to get rid of the water that, you know, but now I find out I gotta get a permit, I have to have a landscape architect stamp it? Really? I'm gonna use all native plants and I'm gonna cut down on my watering? The city of Ojai doesn't even have a water conservation policy that makes sense." This is what I'm saying, it all gets back to, it all comes back to the root cause, and the root cause is when you read our codes and ordinances and things like that, they're horrible. They're not even in a, in a language that I can understand. One way, one place it says something else, and the other place it says completely the opposite. And so when you, or Rob are trying to find places where, yeah, you gotta get a permit, you look over here and you go, "Well, you're violating this, so you have to do this." Yeah, but then we research it more, we find out, "Well, no, over here it says you don't." Well, that's wrong. That's on us, that's our fault. That's not the applicant's fault. And we hear this over and over and over in the community. And it's not right. It's treating people poorly. So we have to go through this and we have to clean it up. We, and we, how many years has it been since we've done that? Have we ever really truly done that? Ever? No. The answer is no. What we've done is we've added on to really poorly-written codes and stuff. We've just, and you can see it, C-section, blah, 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 blah. And it was, you look at it and you go, "Oh, well, that's where Katrina added the sign ordinance and applies here, and so you gotta go over there to look at that." Well, you can't expect people to understand that stuff. We have to clean this up, and the only way we're gonna do it is if we hire someone dedicated to doing it. And it may take more than one person, but it's, what we're doing here is, it's circular. Year after year, it's the same thing. People are upset, people get mad at you, they get mad at Rob, they get mad at Rob, they get mad at the mayor, they get mad at me, they get mad at us. Why? Because this stuff is really bad. It's not the fees, it's not this, it's not the little, it's not the symptomatic things, it's the core problem. The core problem is, we need to fix a core problem. So, you know, I'm really, forget all this stuff, you know, we gotta do our housing element, there's no, we have no choice on that, and I really feel like we need to get someone on board. We need to, we need to tell our council members, "It's time to dedicate the resources to straightening this problem out." Again, I'm not talking about our subcommittees and stuff because that's...
No, no, I understand you.
I want to get down to, I mean, I feel like I'm wasting my time up here every year because I don't feel like we're planning. The only, the closest we've ever gotten to planning is Complete Streets, to some degree the building codes, which I still don't like, I feel like I need to go through those again. That's about it. So I've been sitting here for 10 years, and that's all we've got to show for planning? It's not very impressive. And I feel like I'm at the end of my rope.
Well, you know, the other, the other challenge in this, you know, I've, I've highlighted on the priority list what is state mandated. So at the time when you're saying we need to revamp our codes, we've got the state requiring that we add to the, add to the codes that the citizens don't even want. And, and so, and all, and our staff resources are all dedicated to that.
Yeah, we're, we're passing codes that we don't even like, that come out, that actually from the state that make no sense. You read them, you're like, "Who wrote this?"
And, you know, based on past history, we won't get to the other things because another citizen initiative will come in the meantime. The, the, what do you call it? Formula, Formula Businesses was, was an example that just had to be done. I mean, that might be the way to get this done is to have, you know, the citizens just, you know, that's the way things happen, that they, they make enough noise that that becomes the priority. So, I mean, I, I see it as, as a real challenge that, that, you know, we've gone through this list, we seem to do it almost annually, and, and then things like this come up and we're back where, where we were. On the Complete Streets, I think that, that has been a success because we're sort of, it's all volunteered, a lot of work has been being done, it's kind of off to the side where we can, we've been able to set the agenda. But when you look at this list, there's one, there's one thing on it that's third priority, which was the GIS. And so there's a whole lot of resources that have, that have been invested in that, and we're sort of flagging because, you know, the, that was our next step is get the GIS done, and, and now it's third priority.
Well, we pushed it, we pushed it back because of the lighting ordinance, we pushed back, all these citizen-based things got, pushed us back on, on everything. I mean, we took the building codes and sidelined them.
It seems that...
Our role as commissioners is reactionary. It's always the tyranny of the urgent that propels us in the direction that we're, wherever we're at, and because of that, we get into that vicious circle that you described, Troy. One thing I like that you mentioned that seemed to be a possible part of the solution is delving into the districting and neighborhood of the various, and establishing those, what that, what those neighborhoods and districts look like. And I think we already do have a fairly good idea what that is. But what that does, it takes, it takes a, a big, undescribable, systematic inefficiency and narrows it down to something that's small that we can actually deal with. And it's within that framework is what I think that will give us the ability to deal with these issues that I see on this sheet of paper, at least in terms of neighborhood zoning, to, you know, water use, whatever, whatever the issue it is, it doesn't matter, but it gives us a framework to work within. And that's what I feel that we're lacking, and in a sense, it does go back to this basic idea of vision that you were talking about, Kathy. Correct. I mean, we have to go back to that, that beginning point, that starting point, which is the vision. What are we trying to do with our time and our effort, our energy in the first place? And we all are, you know, have, want, want the best for our community. We know that. But without a, a laid-out program, the way to approach it, it isn't gonna happen, and we're just gonna, just like everyone is saying here, it's just gonna continue in this vicious circle, and we're gonna be reactionary instead of proactive, what we're trying to do. So I, I think what I'm hearing to say, to some degree, it's very frustrating, obviously, to all of us here. We've put a lot, there's a lot of years sitting here on this board right here, a lot of years. And to think that we're sitting here that frustrated, trying to deal with these basic items in front of us, is even more frustrating. So how do we get back to basics? It seems that we always gotta go back to basics and determine what's gonna lead us to the next step. So I think it's been mentioned here, but I just, I'm enjoying this conversation, at least we're talking about it.
Well, you know, the, the, it's so, what you said is correct. We've got all this expertise, Complete Streets I look at as kind of the gold standard because of the way you approach things, and that, how that dovetails into the GIS thing. But, you know, the, one of the things that I've always seen is, like a vision, is if I'm, if you take the corridor between, between the arcade and up here to Canyatta, and you can go maybe four or five blocks back, and there's probably, you know, there's, obviously we're Ojai, so there's some other segments that look the same. Literally, you could walk in here and say, "You know, I'm Joe Blow, I just moved into the neighborhood, and I want to do a new landscape." Oh, and Sherry goes, "Oh, well, right over there's a brochure about landscaping in Zone Five or the downtown area. Tells you everything you need to know. If you do these kinds of plants, natives, some of them maybe not natives, depends on what works in the area, right? This kind of sprinklers, it tells you everything." And if you turn in your own plan with your own plot plan and you designate what you're gonna do, and there's flexibility because plants die and you might, you know... and there's flexibility because plants die and you might, you know, I've never, I've never met a landscape that I liked after I put it in. Ever. Have you? You're always going, "Oh, God, wouldn't it be great if we put that over there?" So there's flexibility, right? But you can go pick up that brochure. Sherry doesn't have to have the conversation. Say, they'll tell you everything you need to know if you want to plant and do a redo or plant in that neighborhood. Same, the Arbolata would be another one. You know, you have just these materials that you can pick up and go walk away with, and you can feel like, "Wow, this is really easy." And you should have the same thing for building, putting in a, a wall or a driveway. And it says, "Well, if you live on the corner, there's a special exception. You can't put anything over thirty, whatever it is, thirty inches, so many feet from the corner. But you can pretty much do whatever you want as long as it fits in this planting zone." What's fun, what's interesting is when we break our, what we do down, it's very simple. What do we do? We build. We landscape. Start, just write them down. You'll probably come up with seven things. So we take each neighborhood, and maybe we put it under the banner Neighborhood Planning. We take one neighborhood at a time. We have a full-time person that either frees Rob up to help create these things with us. But there's dedication to it, and we take one neighborhood at a time and we get it done, from code to pamphlet, all the way across. And it's done, and we call it good. And it has the fees, and it has maybe a CPI in there or something, so you can go, "Well, that pamphlet's two years old, but you gotta add six percent to that fee." It's really simple. That, to me, is the kind of vision I'm talking about. And architects can use it, right?
Sure.
It's online. They can go, "Oh, I'm gonna build a foundation wall." "Oh, that's category five neighborhood. Oh, well, this is the cut sheet for that. I can't, oh, I can't come that close to the neighbor because of this issue or that issue." Real simple, all online.
So it's about implementation. How do we get there? And, you know, the part-time assistant, it just isn't enough. He's, the staff needs to have a full-time, another full-time planner. It's just, it's, it's costing, I believe, the city and us not only in time, but in money, not having it. The time that it takes to do things, the times it takes not to do things that we can't get around to. I, I really see it as a necessity.
The revenue we generate in Sherry's office should be easy to generate. That's the other thing. We need to look at it from a financial perspective. Which is that, you know, we should be generating revenue to the city that's easy to generate. A good segment of the revenue we generate through planning should be not hard, very easy. And if you take that approach, then you can hire the staff you need to do these things. Right now, it's hard to make money in this building. Not easy. You can raise fees, but guess what? You really make people mad, and you end up lowering it.
So right now, we, you know, we're planning to lower the fees on a lot of things. And that brings up the question, by doing so, you know, how much are we cutting back? And not having that allotment of funds that could go to a full-time planner rather than a part-time? I mean, are we, how much revenue are we losing by cutting back? Because I don't necessarily think our fees are higher than any place else. Are they higher than the county? Are they higher than?
That's the problem that we all have. Every community does the same thing. Well, compared to Santa Paula, they're not bad. Well, Santa Paula just raised their fees two years ago. We raised our fees at the same time. Guess what? No one really knew what the fees were raised to. We just raised them. You gotta remember, we had another city manager in place, and he kind of did things differently. So it's just, it's like, you know, it's like salaries. Well, if we want to get more people here, better people here, we have to raise them up to whatever Ventura County. That is the wrong perspective. What we have to do is create fees that are based on, on a reasonable application. So for example, a sign permit, I don't know what it should cost, maybe $200. But God, I'd rather have $200 going to the city where you hand out a pamphlet, an application, you fill it out, turn it in, you get your permit the next day. Than one where you're going, "Well, you gotta put all this in, and we're gonna have to review all this, that, and the other." And so you really didn't make 200 bucks. You maybe made 10. You see what I'm saying? If we go from top to bottom, we can design it so that the margins are better on our permitting fees. The client's happy. If I had a downtown business and I paid 200 bucks and it only took a day to get the permit, I'd get my sign done, and you made 190 bucks, you'd think I'd care? No, I wouldn't care. Now, I understand some of the issues with the law, but without, that's a reasonable fee. It has to be within the guidelines. Versus coming in and saying, "Well, you know, I'm not sure we're gonna have to take a look at this one. It might violate that. It might violate that." Then you just created more than $200 of staff time to review a sign. You see what I'm saying? We are not operating profitably. We're operating, we don't even know if we're operating profitably, actually. We don't know.
But is the other question, and I understand what you're saying there. For instance, if somebody comes in, they look at this, they come in and they talk to you, they look at the sign ordinance, they go, "Okay, I get it. That's gotta be this size, you know, it can only hang this far down. It's gotta be in this color palette." If they come in and do that, you know, what's the turnaround for them getting the print? Right. So really, I think-
It's one day and it's $120.
Right. So it's not that much money, and, and it's probably the same for a lot of other things we have. If you follow the directions, comply, then it's okay. The problem, I think, that you're bringing up is, for a lot of people that are complaining, is they want to do something different. And as soon as you want to do something that's different-
Not true.
No?
Nope.
Okay.
I built that sign over on front of the yellow building there. That nice little vivid sign that was made of rock.
Oh, on the avenue.
It was a nightmare.
Because?
Because when you read the code, it took at least 30 days for Katrina to figure out how to get that sign built for, for me to build that sign.
So the code isn't really clear. In, in other words, you were doing something a little different than what's in the code.
We had to do this thing where we measured the front of the building, and if it had to be so many, it was crazy. And she wanted the sign. She thought it was great. We did a rendering. Everyone, "That's beautiful. We gotta make sure that fits into our ordinance." You know, and she literally went through an effort to make it fit. It is not that simple. And the minute you think it's that simple, someone comes in and tells you it's not simple. And that's, what have we been looking at the past 30 days? Signs. The stupidest thing in the world, that we've been, we've been wasting our time on a, on a sign. That's why we don't get anything done. You know, the, so you have, during a year, 300 permits, you have six problems. So six problems take up six meetings. And maybe an hour and a half a meeting. That's half our time, ladies and gentlemen. Really? And, you know, it's ridiculous. And then you read the code, read the sign. If you're not convinced, you think this just thinks so easy, and yes, Sherry does it in a day, and it's so simple, and you wonder why people aren't creative, read the ordinance. That sign ordinance is the most ridiculous thing I've ever seen in my life.
So this gets back to something that, that I've been thinking about with this is, which is, it's a small town. And that gives us an opportunity to really do things the way we want to do them. I, I think that's, that's, you know, we're, we're kind of at a disadvantage in the sense that you have the state and they're kind of sending down these mandates. But on the other hand, you know, we're kind of the front line where all those laws actually meet the actual people who do stuff. And I think this is a real opportunity for us to just say, "Okay, the state mandates, like with stormwater, you know, you can't have it come off your property." Why can't we write something that says that in like plain language and says, "Here's what you need to do. Here's how you have to comply with this stuff for the state, and here's how much it's gonna cost." But I think, you know, there's no reason we can't write it the way we want it to be. And just have it so people can understand it. And it, and it should have a, a feeling to it. The thing that always bugs me about the zoning code is, you can tell it was written somewhere else and just sort of applied to Ojai. And I've always thought we ought to have like an Ojai zoning code that is in Ojai language, you know, that, that really has a sense of what the city's about and what we'd like to accomplish and, and how we'd like people to feel when they live here. It seems like that would be easy enough to, to put into the language of these things.
The stormwater thing's an interesting one. It's going around among the contractors. I don't know if you've heard it, but on larger, on commercial projects, when I say larger, that doesn't mean big. It just means like, you could take half an acre here, no higher, less than that. The rule of thumb is, the stormwater thing, the engineering, just add another 100 grand to your project. Not that it makes sense, but just add that, because that's what it's gonna require to get through that. That's, that's what I'm talking about. How ridiculous is that? We, so we add $100,000 to, you know, these smaller projects just because of this thing? And really, the reality is the, it's because someone has to go and write all this stuff in a big report that no one actually reads. And they write it in a way that it passes through our planning process. That's what happens. It's just like the Sequo thing, you know, you get those huge reports, you're like, "What?"
It gets back to the thing about like form-based codes. It's like, what do we really care about? You know, I don't, I don't care if they meet all these parameters. I just care that they're dealing with all the water on their site, and it's not going into the storm drain. I mean, that seems pretty simple to just-
With it or whatever. That's great.
Yeah. I don't care how they do it.
But to spend $100,000 to, to show me that, that's stupid. I mean, and then-
I have the same problem with the-
And we want affordable housing?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, it's just, it's totally contrary to what-
Yeah. I mean, that's the same problem I have with the zoning code. It's, it's, I think Paul's like more of an expert on this than I am, but if we had a form-based zoning code, all this stuff would be really simple. It's like, you know, does it meet the parameters? And we don't really care beyond that, you know? It looks nice and-
Well, you're right. I mean, we're all, I think, you're both hitting the nail on the head. It's, what do we want? For Ojai? Start there, and then we just go from there. What do we want for each neighborhood? You've already got the landscape. You already know, and I know when you're thinking about landscape, you're thinking about neighborhoods.
Yeah. I was gonna bring up, okay, so what do we need to do to make this happen? What's our next step? So I, I think, you know, we, I think we are, we are all here because we love Ojai. And we understand that we need to have a clear vision, but we need, that vision needs to happen with city council and staff, and possibly the other commissioners, uh, commissions. And how do we make that happen? What do we need to do? And the other thing is, can we do it without hiring someone? Can't, do we have the ability to do that, or if we had to hire someone, do it so it doesn't cost lots of money and get shot down, and we don't end up doing it? And staying in this continual, you know, bed of quicksand that we're in, that we just keep going around and around? So I'm looking at Rob because I, I'm wondering, is there a suggestion or something that you think we could do? Like, would this be something we bring up at our next meeting with city council? We have done this before, and it didn't really go anywhere. I did not feel satisfied. And I think we're all willing to, you know, do what we need to do as far as meeting with them, and we need to do something to make it happen. We can't just talk about it. We need to be some, we need to take action to arrive at what this vision is. And we probably need to have some community input, because it's all about the community, when we're part of the community. And then from there, then the planning and the implementation happen. And then when you go for a full circle, we should be able to ultimately see that vision again. I mean, that's the, the ability paradigm, is you come, you have your vision or your dream or your want. When you have that and it's clear, then you can start, you plan. What's the plan? How are we gonna make this happen? And that gets back to all of our codes and planning and what we do here. And then implementing it is, you know, what people are doing on the streets, what the building inspectors going out and doing. And then ultimately, when we see the results, we should go, "Oh, bingo, there's our vision." I mean, that's it in a nutshell, and it's way more complicated than that, because we have a lot of people to deal with and procedures and what have you. But I would say that I'm willing to be a part of it, to make it happen. I just want to know, like, what can we do next? Or what, what's, what are some good ideas so that we could move forward?
You know, Kathy, if we could, I think you have to make some assumptions. And, and then, and we're, and I'm stepping out, you know, because there's nothing really to substantiate it, but let's assume that we had a full-time, another full-time planner, number one. Then you ask yourself, "What are you gonna do with that time that, that person, that, that person is with?" And that's when we can really focus on, with that understanding, we can focus then on the priorities that we're, that you're talking about, whatever they may be. But there's a big assumption step, because without having that resource there, it's a big, it's a big part of the game. The other resource are the subcommittees, and we talk about complete streets, and we're all on, pretty much on a subcommittee, one kind or another. And I think it's, I think that's a good thing. But we, we are gonna have a limited resource, so we have to look, we have to evaluate our resources. And, and knowing that we had, if we had access to another planner, how, what would be the best use of that time? And I think that's a good place to start.
I, I agree with you. I, I think we do need the planner, but I guess what I'm, I think we have to start with all being on the same page. And that's what I'm wondering, like, how, what, what can we do that isn't gonna cost a lot of money, isn't gonna take a lot of staff time, but that we could get together with staff, with city council, and, and say, and get the community input and say, "Okay, good. What do we want here? What do we want for Ojai?" And we, you know, we have to start kind of big. And then bring it, and then you start scaling it down, and then we prioritize. And I realize we have to do these state mandate things. I know that that's like ongoing, so I'm not saying drop those and go to this, you know, vision, visioning session. But I think if we don't do it, we're gonna just be doing the same thing. Like you said, you've been 10 years. I haven't been here that long. This is my, I guess, this is my third or fourth year. But, yeah, I could just see, it doesn't, it doesn't go anywhere. So I'm trying to just think of, you know, how to move forward. Realizing we don't want to spend a lot of money, and we want to be efficient, and we want to be all-inclusive.
Well, I, I think, you know, I'm kind of one of those people that feel you can't just go to someone. When we talk about going to someone, we talk about going to council. You have to go to someone with a problem and a solution, not just, "Hey, you know, we think we need more people." That's, of course, not always what we want to hear. So I think your question is total, is right on the money, which is, okay, one, it would be great if we could have another full-time equivalent, and then before we hire that person, we have a plan, which basically means a subcommittee. But if we don't, then I think what we have to do is, I think we, being us, have to make an impact on the community out of the gates. So we can't just do something just for the sake of doing it, and it's go, at the end, go, "God, I'm so proud we did this." It's great. I mean, complete streets is great, but not very many people know about it. We do. We think it's wonderful. But really, not a lot of people know about it. The people that care deeply about the community know about it. But it's always the same people, you know what I mean? So what we, I think what we have to do is, if we don't get a full-time equivalent, we say, "Look, we're gonna do this." So maybe-
I'm doing something planning commission-related, but I don't know how that happened.
But maybe what we do is, we decide what, and it doesn't have to be a neighborhood, but maybe it's an area. We could say, "Look, we're gonna take Ojai Avenue." Or we're gonna take this area behind O Avenue, or the area here. And we, you know, nuts to bolts, we go through the process so we can learn how to do this. And we, the key is, we gotta keep it simple. So we define, what is it that we, as planners, do for a neighborhood and that we want to do? What are the things that are off limits? What are the things that we want to do? You know, and again, we'll probably have a list of five things. The building, the str, the landscape, you know, we just, we define these things. And then we take that neighborhood, maybe if we do a commercial corridor, the signs would be one. And we, we go from there, we, we work, and, you know, I think it's great because we have to have the complete streets involved with this and the GIS. Right? And we just, we do it. We don't hire someone. We work as much as we can alone, I suppose, getting what input we can from the people that we know care. And Rob, but we can't, we can't afford to take too much of his time because he's got priorities he's gotta get done, and we do it. And, you know, maybe that's the investment we make if city council isn't willing to give us the investment. If they are willing to give us the investment, then we focus on the vision. We kind of do the same thing, but we do it with someone that can kind of take off and get work done, you know, behind the scenes. And go work on the codes, get more done. That's my, that's what I'm thinking.
I agree with you, Troy. I think you have, the challenges of us doing it, I, I think that's a great plan. But just the resource of time, your energy, my energy, whoever who's available to do that. We could probably do it, but it's gonna take this long versus if we have help, we can work in conjunction with that equivalent you're, you're talking about and facilitate this that much quicker. I think it's a necessary component of making this, setting up this initial, I like the idea of setting up an, an additional, initial goal of a, of specific neighborhood district, whether, whether it be the downtown area or whatever. I think that, 'cause I think as a group, we, I, I think our vision is there. I think we've talked about it enough. It's just, it's in an abstract format right now. It's not, it's not detailed. It's not itemized. But I think we are on the same page in, in just about everything, really. So it goes back to your question of implementation.
Right. And so this is my question. I maybe, I wasn't being clear earlier. I, to me, I know that it could take a lot of time. I don't see any problem in us doing that. I've already done it with the Community Forest Management Plan. We've been doing it with complete streets. Just the work that I did with the landscape ordinance, even though that's across the board. I, I, I see no problem. It's just a matter of time and commitment. It's just a matter of time and commitment. But that's not what I was getting at. I think us as a commission, I think we get that and we'd have to sit down and kind of fine-tune it. But what I'm saying is, do we want the city council to be on board with what we're doing? I would think so. And the community input? So in other words, if we have a vision, you know, do, you know, do we share the vision or do we create the vision with the bigger community? And that's what I'm getting at, is like, how do we go to that step? Because the, the part about going through the neighborhoods, I think that, yeah, that's, that to me isn't a super big deal. I mean, it's gonna take time and we have to be real thorough and we'd probably come up with a matrix, you know, format to do it, but I think it's very doable.
I think, you know, the community thing is always kinda the black hole. We always love this idea of, gee, let's get the community involved. And then it's like, well, how exactly do we do that? You know? I actually think we've got all the community input we can possibly have in our hands and in our heads. I mean, the meetings, I've read in, and the results of those meetings, so that, that actually, I think there were three meetings. You know, I feel like, I think that's one of the reasons we're here, you know? And by the way, I've got, I'm actually meeting with community members every, you know, so often right now because of their concerns about housing. I feel like my head's just about to explode with input. I think the meetings, anything we do should be open to the community. And we should let the community know, hey, we're working on this. So if you, you know, if we're working on downtown, you wanna let the business owners know. And then you let the larger community know and say, hey, we're working on this. That's how you get the community into it. People that are gonna care are gonna be here. You know, hopefully members of the Green Coalition will be here and other, other interested parties. But I, you know, I feel like we've got the experience and the right people that are, we already know who the people that care that we can get. That's the easy part, really, the community part.
So we need, do we need to get buy-in from city council on doing this? And so maybe the way to move forward is for us, maybe we have a small subcommittee, or maybe we do it one of our planning commission sessions.
Literally pick a neighborhood and planning commission, then we subcommittee out.
But we need to, we need to say, okay, this is, we're coming up with this idea, you know, this dream or this vision, and we think this is a way to, to resolve and solve some of these problems, is to, by creating, you know, the neighborhoods and going in and it's gonna, we're gonna look at walls and fences, we're gonna look at the public right-of-way, we're gonna be looking at whatever else we need to look at, setbacks and what have you. And this is the, the structure or the format that we would like to use. And then, of course, we, they would have to get their approval before we can move forward, I think. Is that true, Rob, or?
I, I think Troy's correct in that there's, there's been some desire on the council's part to deal with things on neighborhood by neighborhood. So I think they buy into this concept already. The, the challenges, as, as you're all aware of, is how much of a staff role is there and how much is gonna be a subcommittee? Because I think the reality is, it's gonna be one of those two. And budgetarily, I don't see the council being in a position to add, and, I mean, you can lobby for it, but that's what it's gonna take. Because right now, they're, you know, we're just rebounding and gee, we got all this backload of roads, and that's the priority. I also wanna be really clear, so this 18-hour-a-week, which is basically halftime, assistant planner position is not something new. It's not a new thing added to my budget. It's basically a reprogramming of Brian's full-time position. And instead of having a rehire, instead of hiring a new, a new full-time building official, building inspector code enforcement, we're gonna utilize contract building official, which has been Steve Stewart Consulting, and they've been doing a great job, and they've been giving us about, just about 16 hours a week. And as things pick up, it might be 20 hours a week, so that's what we're programming budgetarily. But the, but that's not, that's less money than a full-time building official position. So what I've said is, I said, I really need the help in the planning side. I got these, these really sharp consultants handling the building and the code enforcement, along with Sherry stepping up, and that's running smoothly, so I need help in planning. But it's not like they're adding a halftime position to my department. That's not what they're doing. So just keep that in your mind when you're lobbying because the, having that person to just help out, help Sherry out, help me out, is gonna free up a decent amount of my time to help you or a subcommittee with some of these priorities. Yeah, if we wanted to get it done quickly and, 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 and we had another hundred thousand dollars, let's get another senior planner in there, full-time position for a one-year limited-term position. But I don't, I don't see that, I don't see that dollar amount dropping out of the budget without, without really it becoming more of a priority than it's been. But I, I think it's, I think Troy's on to something, I think all of you share this. There's, there's a, there's some discontent in the community that's a function of our small staff and everything that we're dealing with. It's a workload issue. And, and the assistant planner position will help. More help would be better, but I, I can assure you, I'm gonna have more availability once that 18-hour-a-week person comes in. Not a ton more, but, but more than I have right now.
I have a little, I've, I've been trying to draw some lines between the dots. John's point about this being such a small town and the fact that a lot of what gets done is, is by committees with staff support. And, and then Troy, you're, you know, your point about having a simple template. This, this is a problem that is part of my profession. It's one of the reasons I travel all over, only it's, I'm just one of a large team that goes in and addresses just these issues, only in a, in a sort of a concentrated, a charrette-type fashion. I'm not, i- if we could get the grant, that would be, that would be great. And that might be one of, one other alternative we should have on the table, is should we have more resources just towards grant writing, you know, to, to do something like that. However, in the meantime, the, the idea of doing it ourselves and doing a form-based code type of application, if you guys probably have heard of Seaside, Florida, from the Truman Show, it's like sort of the original New Urbanist thing. This was their code on one, on one page.
Cool. Nice.
Yeah. It's all graphics. Yeah, that's the, that's the first form-based code. And, you know, so I, I'm, I'm thinking, well, how could we keep it simple? How could this, how could we do it ourselves? How could it be more funky, small-town, you know, our own thing? And you could almost set up a, a matrix like this and go to each neighborhood, start filling it out, talk to the people, does this make sense in this neighborhood? And just, you know, fill it in. It's, it's a possibility.
I like that.
I'm interested.
I think that's really cool.
Simple's good.
That looks great. And that's not reinventing something. It's using a model that's already a workable model and modifying it.
Right.
And one of the things that you brought up earlier, Paul, were these initiatives that come through. And I think that's a real symptom of there being this kinda disconnect between the, the people in the city and the actual government of the city. I think what you're seeing there is people saying, you know, this isn't working for me, let's do something different. I think people are so used in their daily lives now to, you know, they're doing everything on the internet, everything's happening really fast, they've got instant communication, and then you come to the city and all of a sudden you're in this whole other world where everything moves really slowly and we've got all these organ, you know, requirements and ordinances and, I think it'd be really nice if there was some way we could, we could kinda bring those two things back together somehow and have the city be kind of responsive in the same way that a lot of things you get in business are nowadays, where things happen really quickly, you know? And I would love to see all this stuff online, so people could just go, you know, like Troy was saying, if you wanna build a building downtown, you don't have to come to City Hall, you can go online and look at them and say, oh, what do I have to do? Okay. And then by the time you come to City Hall, you've already got all the parameters laid out. Yeah.
You're all gonna hate this one, but I love it. This is off of his thing for Seaside. Specifications number two, variance to the code shall be granted on the basis of architectural merit. How great is that? Yeah. I mean, think about the, think about the tile place on Kenyatta. That would not have gone through, you know, kind of a normal process, step, book, you know?
Yeah, it's a good example.
That's a great example. And that's, I mean, I'm kinda one of those people that think there actually should be variances, lots of them, because I want people to be creative. I don't want them to be idiots and do things that are unsafe, but you wanna be creative. And the problem with not form-based codes is people can't get creative. And this is just, this is a great example to send around. It just allows people to be creative, which is, you know, Seaside's, it's made itself a destination, you know? It's, people know it. So there's a lot to be gained. It's great.
So, I, you know, I, I hear a little bit of frustration, but I also want the commission to keep in mind, from my perspective, we've accomplished a lot and you guys are doing a good job with design review applications that come through and, and things like that. Process-wise, I agree 100%, especially in this day and age, people want answers right away. And that's one of the reasons why they appeal, the, the, somebody disagrees with, with director decision and, okay, sorry, your, your only recourse is to go to the planning commission and that'll be $1,160 and maybe you'll get up there in three weeks. That doesn't work well. And it's, it's not even so much the money, it's the waiting, the waiting. They don't wanna wait that long. So there's things that we can continue to do on process-wise. I think the, this group recognizes the importance of, of having the fifth cycle housing element done on time, delivered to the state so that they can review it, get it back to us, and we can adopt it before the end of the year. That's gonna take a lot in the next six months. And then, we already talked about signage. That was, last meeting, we talked about it's, we need to get a subcommittee going on that. That could be a separate effort. And now this, this whole neighborhood planning concept or the zoning code, you know, reworking, making it more form-based code oriented, that's, that's another, that would be, you know, along the level of the Complete Streets, yeah, subcommittee in terms of the level of work. But one of the reasons that Complete Streets is so successful is that it's had a lot of resources and dedication. So if you make this your next priority and you get the council buy-in, which I think you will, then that's something to really focus on and, and, and just, then it's a matter of just letting people know, you know, there's all these other things that we'd like to do, but they're just not the highest priority right now. We have some really bigger picture things that we gotta wrestle with. So, but the, there's an opportunity to have more of this discussion on the 14th with the council, but then keep in mind too, that there's also an hour and there's, there's other things that you may wanna talk about, variances, the degree to which, or maybe creative solutions for requiring surveys on right-of-ways, whether they're Caltrans right-of-ways or public right-of-ways, some of these issues that, that I've talked with either groups of you or, or individually with you. And, you know, that's a really good opportunity to have that discussion. I think that, that they're gonna wanna know what, you know, what are, what's your sense for the most important priorities for the next year? And I think we're starting to get a pretty good handle on that, what to tell them. And then they're gonna wanna know, what else can we talk about? And, and the discussion that you had with council member Laura is probably something that you wanna have with a larger group. Carlin Strobel will not be there on the 14th. It won't be a full council, but, but you'll have the opportunity to talk about those things. So what I'm hoping to get from you tonight is what else you wanna talk about? And then I think I have a, it's, it's not gonna be me talking a lot at all. I may talk for two minutes and then it's gonna be a dialogue between the council and the commission and any questions that, that you may direct to me. So before we leave the issue, if there's any other things that are, that wanna be separate line items for this discussion, that's all I'm gonna be preparing for the meeting on the, the 14th, the joint meeting, is an agenda. These are the, the things we wanna talk about. One of them's gonna be work plan and priorities for Community Development Department, which we talked a lot about this evening, and then whatever else you want on there. And I think we wanna talk about variances. I'm not sure what else we wanna talk about.
Could I just remind the commission of one item that they have brought up many, many times, is parking, and they didn't even mention it tonight, but, and I know it's part of the big picture of the zoning, but just like in your neighborhoods, you were saying landscape, this, the encroachments, this and that, but parking is one of them. Like Shady Lane would be a neighborhood that only required one covered or whatever. I'm just, don't forget that one little aspect of the big picture.
That's actually part of the Complete Streets, where you look at the streets and the parking and the street design. I do think surveying should be a discussion item. I mean, I won't be there at the meeting, but I know there have been issues, questions and ambiguity about surveys from, in property lines.
Yeah, that should be a requirement to this thing on, this wall issue. If there was a survey required in the very beginning, this whole thing would have never come about. So I think it's a very important point, that actually.
Yeah, and, and we have that requirement. It's, you know, we have a pretty robust list of requirements. They, certain components cost money and one of them is a survey. And so not, you know, we'll say, well, we need a survey, and people will, will get so much pushback from applicants because they'll go, get a quote from somebody and they'll say, well, I don't know, maybe $1,200 to $2,000, and the applicant goes ballistic. They say, I just wanna build a fence. It's gonna cost, you know, $1,500 to build a fence, but I gotta get a survey, it's gonna cost me $2,000. So one of the things that, that we talked about in one of the pre-meetings yesterday was maybe having a list, going out to surveyors and saying, look, we wanna have a list of surveyors that we will recommend at the city. We are going to be requiring surveys of the, of the right-of-way, but we need you guys to give us reasonable rates. And maybe it's just two points on the, on the front line, front property line for 300 bucks. Can you, can you do that? And if they say, yeah, we can do that, or, yeah, but it's gonna be 400, we'll, we'll figure out what a cutoff is and whoever wants to be on that list will get those referrals from the city.
Yeah, part, part of that might be defining to the surveyor what you actually need because there's, again, state requirements that if you locate a pin, you gotta send in a record of survey. It's gotta have all the, the, you know, it, that's what gets expensive. But if, you know, we should actually talk to a surveyor, here's what we want, what's the best way to get it? What would you call that? So that when, when a property owner goes to them, they're, they're not, you know, doing something beyond what's really needed.
Another thing, I think someone mentioned here, that I hesitate to say this because, you know, I kinda sympathize with people, but one of the things that we have to do when this is done and we are, maybe some time between now and then, is we have to have fines for people that, where we give a stop-work order and they ignore it. If there's no penalty, who cares? And I, and you know, there's sometimes you look at projects and you kinda go, well, yeah, we kinda missed, it was kinda things that we screwed up on, we shouldn't fine them. So I'm a little hesitant, but we do need, in the end, have some system that says, okay, we, we've got a fair process, we've got reasonable fees, we try and make this as easy as possible, but, you know, there's a penalty for not using the process if you knew, if you knew or, you know, were aware of it. And there's, that should, by, by the way, be very easy to understand. Right now, people really don't understand when they have to get a permit for a sign. Most people in the business think, oh, just put a sign up. They don't even know they have to get a permit. So it's kinda one of those gray areas, you know? But once we get this defined, we have to have some mechanism that says, you know, we have a process for these things, they're clearly defined. If you start something and you get a stop-work order and you don't comply, then you will be fined. And this is what it is, and there's very few exceptions to that. I think we have to do that.
I had another thought too. I hate to create another list, but, and this probably has to do mostly with the commercial projects. When a property is sold, I don't know if the realtors would hand it out or what the mechanism would be, but if there was a list that said, you know, you know, welcome new property owner, you know, when you change or sign it, you need to get a sign permit. If you, you know, wanna do these improvements, just so they have this information, because I think what I'm hearing from you is that people just, they don't know.
We can require, like we do, there is a pamphlet that we give out, the city.
Made it part of our code. What is that, Sherry, years ago? They, was it a tree thing or something that the realtors have to give to?
That's right.
Yeah, it's a tree ordinance, right? They have to give it out. We can actually, if we simplify the process, we can have a pamphlet, basically, that is required to give on every sale of property, and it can spell out all this stuff very simply. So it says, you know, if it's a commercial property, you So it says, you know, if it's a commercial property, you want a new sign, you have, there's a permit fee, you know, fences, blah, blah, blah. So we can, we can do that.
Another subcommittee.
It doesn't even have to be a pamphlet. We could say, go to this website.
Yeah, that, that sort of thing is, that's a staff function. We, we have a website, we have, we have, you know, it's not that difficult to put together content for these pamphlets, it's, it's just a workload priority. But I, I think, I'm realizing how important it is to have that, especially in this day and age. And so one of the, one of the hopes of the assistant planner position is to, is to have that person devote some time, his or her time, to developing those, getting them over our website. Our website's really difficult to navigate for planning issues. It's, it's really, um, it's, I'm, I'm not happy with the way it's set up to get these types of, this information out there. So, I wouldn't, don't feel like that's another subcommittee lurking out there. I think that's, that's purely a staff function, and it hasn't, we just haven't had the resources for it, but I, I want to make the resources because I think it's a really high priority. And maybe that's something to mention with the city council, say, you know, this is something we want staff to work on. And, you know, honestly, if, if 18 hours isn't cutting it, and, you know, there's all these things that we're just getting started and would be great, then, then maybe halfway through the year, then the, then there is some lobbying to take that position to a higher number of hours. Because I think we're going to get busier on the revenue side of things, such that, that the position's going to partially pay for itself, and, um...
If you get the revenues.
For building and, and planning, right? If people come in and get permits. But, you know, 300 a year on average for each, that's a lot. So if there's a lot of illegal stuff going on, I, yeah, but it's not like we're getting 10.
Well, no, my point is, is that, you know, it's often, uh, the, the situation where even if your revenues increase, they tend to get spent elsewhere.
Yeah.
Right.
They don't come back to you. And I think that's a big problem. You need to be seen as a profit center, or a, you know, a center of, yeah, so that when you do your job well and you create these processes, you're able to invest back in your, in your company, which is the planning counter.
Right, but these pamphlets are exactly what you say. They're going to, they're going to save staff time because we're not explaining it to every single, and we'll still have to do that. We'll have a really great pamphlet, and we'll have it saliently on our website, and we'll hand it out to people, and people won't get it, and they'll, they'll ask us to walk through it. But a lot of people will, will utilize that, and that should cut down on our, on our time. And then gee, if we can simplify the zoning code and, and, uh, you know, have, have more at the back end, um, in terms of making it clearer for applicants, then that's going to also free up, free up time. So all these suggestions are good, it just has to go beyond this room and, and involve the council and the community and, you know.
So Rob, I'm assuming that, and we touched, based on talking a little bit about this, that you, you have a access or hands-on feel for the, the ebb and flow of revenue within your department? I mean, is that, is, is it efficient enough to where we, you can determine, you know, when you need to, you know, where, where the department stands financially? Uh, because that can become, you know, uh, the basis for lobbying, if we are, you know, profitable.
Yeah, we, uh, Sheri, in addition to everything else she does, is really good about having monthly and, and annual reports on the number of permits that we're taking in and issuing, and the, the dollars that are coming in, both on the planning side and the building side, so...
That's all your income.
Yeah, I'm looking at the, it's a lot. It's a lot of money, and it's, and it's increasing. April, this year was the best April we had since 2006. 30,000 in building, over 30,000 in building per, permits fees alone, which is a lot.
How much in fines?
Penalties? Well, we only do penalties on building permits, not on planning permits.
What about for code compliance fines?
We don't do any, oh, well, no.
They're very limited at this point. And they don't, they, I mean, the, well, they're, they're not, they don't, they're like $50, $100, $200 administrative citations, and a lot of that stuff. By the time, some of that gets to that level in our code enforcement, we're involving the lawyer, we're, you know, city attorney, we're involving Rob Clark's time, finance, so it's, that's not a moneymaker.
Well, and that's an issue, because sometimes you should have fines that are simply, you got to pay the fine and this will be wiped away. And so it should be a revenue generator, especially on small stuff, like... But you know what? The, the reason they complain is because it's not simple.
They get away with it.
But, yeah, yeah. If we make it simple and we, we do what we're doing, you'll actually, you'll probably generate 20, uh, 20 to $30,000 a year on 50, $100 fines that people just paid because they made it, you know, they did something they shouldn't have done. And it's like, okay, this takes care of that, you're back to square one, but you got to pay the fine first, and there's no exception to that.
All of our fines are for A-4 signs, which have to come to planning commission.
Right. But you know what I'm saying? We don't really have fines, per se, that are meaty. We don't. And people have no problem paying fines as long as they're reasonable and it makes sense, the fine makes sense. You know, you start doing demo and you haven't got your permit, you get red-tagged, it's a $50 fine. Okay, does it wipe away everything? Yeah.
The fines will be used as double the permit fee.
Well, and, you know, that may be too aggressive, actually, you know?
They're complete permit, just the permit section.
Yeah. But you know what I'm saying? And we, we should be looking at every one of these avenues for generating, you know, revenue, so we can get people, you know, get more people to make the process simpler. The simpler it is, the more, the more, I don't want to say money we make, because we're not in the business of making money, but the more we can do for our community is really how it translates.
So do I have it correct that I have four line items, one of which I think will take probably half the time of the 60 minutes? And the other three, we could probably knock out in 10 minutes each if, if the mayor, if people don't get too far sidetracked. Uh, and I think the mayor will do a good job, uh, keeping us on track. But the community development department workload and priorities is probably going to be at least a 20-minute item. And then, got variance, issues and clarifications, that survey requirement, just check in with them, this is what we think. This is why surveys are important. It's expensive, we're looking at ways to make it less expensive. But we want to, we want to have that requirement because it really saves a lot of headache in the end. And then fines, uh, the, you know, should there be fines issued for stop-work? Uh, one of the things we talked about yesterday is illegal signs. Right now, there's zero disincentive for somebody to put up a sign without a permit, because they'll just leave it up there and, and we just depend on their good graces to come in and get a sign permit. And, um, you know, when the sign doesn't comply to our, to either the, the design guidelines for that area or requirements, then it's, it's really difficult to get the applicant to comply. Because a lot of times, well, we won't, we could, and we have on occasion said, we're going to fine you if you don't take the sign down. But a lot of times, we'll let them go through the process and keep their sign up, and then it's, there's...
No, that's, to me, that's so, so simple. You, you, you go to all the businesses, you, you, we pass something that says, look, we're going to send you a note, a notice saying, you should check with the city to see if your sign's permitted. You have a 60-day period to do so.
We could do that.
If after 60 days you haven't done, determined that, there's a $25 fine, okay? If we have to send someone out or whatever. If after, you know, 120 days, you haven't done so, it's, goes up, and it doubles, and then it doubles. Right there, you're going to have every person that's got a sign up and go, hey, Jerry, do I have a permit for the sign? And make it simple for them to get a permit as an as-built, just real simple.
And, and that, that could be one of the things that the subcommittee on signage talks about. But I think with the council, and you can certainly bring it up on the 14th, but with the council, I think the concept of, should we be issuing more fines? Because the only fines that we have out of our department are the administrative citations, which, um, uh, we've done a few of, and they've, they've been effective for the most part. And then the building permit, it's a pretty standard practice to, through a lot of jurisdictions, to do a double permit fee. If, if you do work without permits, you get dinged and come in after the fact. But there's no after-the-fact planning fines, there's no, you know, there's no stop-work, uh, um, I mean, there is, we could do an administrative citation, but it would be good to have that clarified, that we will do that. And that, that, and when people complain, that, hey, this is something that we talked about and said is important, we want to discourage people from blowing off stop, stop-work orders and actually comply.
I think it, uh, the example, there's a number, numeral, uh, examples that come before me in terms of planning, Rob, uh, where we've had a project come before us, and a commercial project, let's say, and we approve it and we condition it. The project gets built out, uh, it's two years later, it's, it's occupied, and they're still not complying with certain provisions of, of the conditions. There's not a whole lot you can do, you know, in terms of, uh, you know, coercing them into doing that. I mean, what are, what are the, uh, how do you deal with that situation a, as, as city staff? I mean, they're occupying the building, you can write them letters, but unless you implement some sort of penalty to it, there's no incentive to take care of the problem. And, and I think I see that happening in a, in a couple of our projects where it should have been done a long time ago, and it's not done, and, and will it ever get done?
It's a good example on Ojai Avenue right now.
Where?
The vine, thinking of trees.
Mm-hmm.
Oh.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, well, that, the, the simplest way to control that is to make sure that before they get their occupancy, that they're complying with everything. But then if something changes after that, then it's difficult.
Which should be.
And, and it, you know, I think there's been a lot of flexibility in terms of granting temporary certificates of occupancy, um, or, you know, it's close enough. But if, if, um, you know, that's the simplest thing, because you really do have leverage. Once you issue the certificate of occupancy, you've lost a lot of leverage.
You're in the building.
Right. But, um, but yeah, there's, there's, there's a process, there's a code enforcement if people aren't complying with their conditional approval.
You know, you can miss things. You know, we've missed the art requirement. How many times have we been told we've missed the art requirement? We don't, we've been told so many times we don't miss it anymore. But it'd be nice to have a little backstop there that says, and you know, I'm not one, I don't like fines, but as long as they're reasonable and they're not absorbent, I don't like the idea of doubling a permit, you know, fee as a fine. I mean, it depends on what it's for.
Well, isn't the idea of a fine should be not to collect revenue, it's to provide, to incentivize the, whoever's doing the project to get, get it done according to its approval?
And it can be stepped up. Because then there are people, we've had people that have just flagrantly ignored every letter, everything, and we, they actually got into the process, and they're, they were fined a lot of money, it was like $60,000. But, in the end, they complied. And it stepped up. And I like that, because it was reasonable, it was reasonable, it was reasonable, and then it was like, wait a minute. And then it got like $1,000 a day or something like that.
Yeah.
And quite frankly, it was deserved. So, but we give people plenty of time to wipe the slate clean for inexpensive fine, and they know everything, it's not going to be held against you, but we just want to get you on the right page, and we go from there. And it, and we should be generating revenues in this community for that, because we are going to miss things.
So it's being clear about enforcement.
Yeah.
And, and defining, you know, the boundaries, just like, you know, here's the limit. If you cross it, or you don't want to comply at some point, you get fined. And then we have to follow through with it.
It's not, I don't want to say it's punitive, because I don't like looking at it that way. It's just like, hey, clear the slate. We're not going to be, you know, you're not going to have an enemy at the planning desk because of this. This is just, hey, you got to pay this fee to clear the slate. If you keep going that way, it's going to get more and more, that's all. No big deal.
So Rob, are you clear on the list for the joint meeting?
Yeah, I think, I think it's, it's certainly enough, and it may be a little bit too much, but, um, you know, the workload and priorities can always be either a committee of the council, a combination committee of the council and the, uh, planning commission. Something else may come out of that meeting as a separate, uh, you know, roll up our sleeves and, and really dig into some of these issues more, and then report back to the full council.
Okay. So Rob, um, as far as bringing up, like, say, the possibility of form-based code in the neighborhoods, is that something we should bring up separately if there's a chance at this meeting?
Yeah, no, I, I think that's part of the, the priorities for the department, is, is what are the things, you know, what's reasonable and pressing to, to...
Right.
...uh, deal with. What, what is the priority of this group here for, um, for tasks and work programs coming out of, out of the community development department? And then the city council may share those. They may say, yeah, that's, that's important, but our, they may say their highest priority is, is structures in the rear yard, and fences, walls, and hedges, and that, that's what they want to be first priority. So it's, it's a conversation.
Okay, thank you. Our next item is, uh, the planning commission will select commissioners to serve as the chairperson and vice-chairperson for the remaining portion of the calendar year. I'm not sure how to begin with that.
Yeah, I mean, everybody knows that this is Marlene's last meeting, we're going to have cake and coffee after the meeting, for anybody that wants to, um, well, you don't have to have coffee if it's too late, but we have cake. It's carrot cake too, so it's fairly healthy. And because she's departing mid, uh, mid-year, we should have a, a chairperson selected and a vice-chairperson selected tonight. It's just the normal procedure. Somebody makes a nomination, somebody else needs to second that nomination, and we ask if there's any other nominations, and if there are, then we get those out, and then, then you take a, take a vote on the first nomination. If you need to, you take a vote on the second or any subsequent. And I would do the chair first, and then the vice-chairman after that.
So do we have a nomination for chair?
I'll nominate Commissioner Nicklin to be our chair.
Any other nominations? You don't have to really second.
Second that.
You don't really have to second the nomination?
You don't?
You have to second the motion. So now, once we get all our nominations, does somebody want to make a motion?
Okay, is there another nomination for chair?
Okay, now, any, a motion for the...
Okay. I'll make a motion that we elect Lawrence Nicklin as our next chair of the planning commission.
In a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, open the nominations for vice-chair.
All right, uh, nominations for vice-chair.
So could I ask, Rob, do we have anybody on the commission that hasn't been a chair? I think everybody's...
I think it's your chair.
Well, I don't know.
In fact, I'll make the nomination that Commissioner Merk for vice-chair.
Okay. Any other nominations? No, a motion for Commissioner Merk?
I'll make a motion to nominate Commissioner Merk as vice-chair.
Second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay.
I was going to suggest that we don't let them off easy, because technically, even though it's premature, they're only going to serve like eight months. I think they should be required to go minimum through next year.
That's an add-on.
Chair Nicklin, you can, you can finish up the meeting.
Oh. Oh, good. Oh, thanks, okay.
Turn your light on first.
So we're going to director's decisions?
Okay, a few things to, to tell you about. I already mentioned the assistant planner position, we're going to advertise that later this week. The advertisement's going to close on Friday, May 24th, so it's pretty, uh, short, it's three weeks. And, um, we'll hopefully get, um, some good applicants and be able to go from there. I already know of a couple people that are interested, so that's a good sign. And I'm actually going to be participating in an APA function, American Planning Association function, on Saturday, and I'll, uh, make, make an announcement there that we're, uh, hiring a part-time assistant planner. The, I think all of you got via email an invitation to an off-grid home tour tomorrow at four P.M. It's up, uh, in the Miners Oaks area, um, off Maricopa Highway, the Green Coalition is, is, um, involved, and, uh, it's Mr. LeFleur, I think is his name, and-
LeFleur.
LeF, LeFleur. Um, and that's, I'm gonna go, I don't know if any, any other commissioners planning on going to-
I'm gonna try to make it.
Yeah, I don't know.
Okay, a couple of you, all right, well, I'll see a couple of you there then. And then, um, the Rec Department has their summer activity guide out, it's probably, you may have seen that floating around, uh, City Hall, it just came out last week. Uh, it's a quarterly publication, well, it's a summer issue for their activity guide. Then we also have several items in the next two city council meetings, and you're gonna meet on the fifteenth, so you'll meet in between these, but in addition to your joint workshop on the fourteenth, we have the, uh, on consent, the Angorola Wall Appeal will, because we weren't able to, the City Council wasn't able to approve it at the last meeting, they, the staff didn't have findings for approval and conditions of approval set up, so we've now done that, and they actually have to grant the variance at their next meeting. So that's coming before them on the fourteenth. And then, also on the fourteenth is a discussion of the concept of this informal appeal process, which I described to you all last time as something that we were gonna implement right away. We're actually setting forth different options for the city council to go on. Uh, one of the things we learned after talking to the city attorney is if they establish a formal committee, um, which I called a subcommittee, but I was corrected by the city attorney, uh, there are no subcommittees of council, they're council committees. If they have a standing committee that does these, the informal appeal process, and that's a Brown Act, uh, controlled group, and that need to open the, the meetings to the public and notice them, and it sort of defeats the whole concept of an informal appeal process, so they may not wanna go there, but they'll talk about some other options to get, um, something less onerous than somebody, uh, having to wait three weeks and, and plop down twelve hundred bucks, or almost that much. Then on the twenty-eighth, we have a number of items on there, we have the second reading of the Phase Two, or the Phase One Housing Element Implementation Program. We have the first reading, the public hearing for the Phase Two heap, that's, they're gonna be both on the same, same meeting. We have, um, the, um, help me out, Sherry, what are the? Oh, yeah, so there's a discussion item on whether the council wants staff and the commission to see this requested revision to the Formula Business Ordinance from Star Market. And they, I think they, they wanna, at a policy level, say, yes, we want you to spend the time on this. Uh, they wanna make that call before they just, uh, have Star Market show up at one of your hearings, or their representatives. And then the four, now, there's the fourth item, and it's just, it skeeps me. Well, I'll, I'll announce the, the fourth, the fourth one at your next meeting, because that, their meeting on the twenty-eighth is before you, but I, I just, I've been busy preparing all these staff reports, and I'll continue to be busy for the next few weeks. So that's all I have on, uh, the director actions, other than the, the report that's just shows what planning permits we issued at the, um, staff level, which were a few, um, over the last couple weeks.
Thank you. We'll move on to item number five, the current code enforcement activity.
Yeah, similar to last time we met, I'm just gonna highlight the ones that we've closed and the new ones. We had two cases get closed. One was for a storage pod in the driveway that was there for many months, apparently. Another one was for an unpermitted banner, and those two have been addressed. And then we got, uh, looks like, looks like a good half a dozen came in last month, um, most of which are still open. So, I think the word is out that, that we're spending some resources on code enforcement, and it's good and bad. I mean, it's good that, that, that the folks that have concerns or complaints are seeing action being taken, but I think it's also kinda opened up the, the floodgate for new code enforcement complaints, so cuts both ways.
Thank you. Item number six, future agenda items.
Okay, so next meeting on May fifteenth, you'll have two, um, development applications coming before you. One is a, basically an as-built conditional use permit for the manner of Ojai that came out of a code enforcement issue that the fire department noted. And the second is a, uh, pretty small addition to a pretty large house, existing house on Foothill Road, uh, but it's a second-story element, and, um, it's, it's an item that, um, we've scheduled for, uh, Planning Commission review, the design review permit. And then we have, um, one that's not quite ready, that hopefully will be ready sometime in June, that's the Ojai, Ojai Vineyard, uh, expansion into the old pottery shop next door. And our long-term, or our long-range planning items for two thousand thirteen will, uh, be in flux pending the discussion of workload with the city council. I do have water-efficient landscape ordinance tentatively set up for June nineteenth, and, um, still holding a spot for the bio-gester, biodigester presentation. But the meeting after this table is July third, which is, um, the Wednesday, you know, so Wednesday before the fourth, and I, I guess there's, there's quite a lot of activity the, the night before. So we may- Yeah, we'll, right, no, we may recommend canceling that, that, uh, if, particularly if we have a fairly light agenda, that might be one where, where we decide to cancel the July third one, so just keep that in the back of your minds.
You know, I thought, I was thinking about it when we were going with the agenda. If we go down this line of what we're talking about, it might be kinda cool if we could, you know, we have two meetings a month, basically, and we have those special meetings occasionally. When we, if we go down this road to, say, the first, um, meeting, uh, of our month, and maybe an hour of the second meeting is for permits and stuff, but we actually set aside an hour of the second meeting, or the first, wherever we work out, to do no- nothing more than discuss our real planning objectives. So we actually start setting aside time to get work done, i- i- you know, whether we have a full-time equivalent ad or not, in our meetings, instead of it being a subcommittee, we might have subcommittees doing stuff, but we just, we tell our applicants and everything, look, the second, you know, whatever we decide, those guys won't see projects, they actually spend that, an hour and a half doing nothing but going over their, uh, planning objectives. That might be a, a solution to get-
Yeah.
-better use of our time.
Excuse me, I like the fact that, um, that we're all able to participate, because we've got a lot of, you know, good knowledge here, and I think that's important.
Thank you. Subcommittee report, anything?
I actually do have a report this evening. We'll start with Complete Streets. We, we haven't been meeting regularly, we had initially last fall, um, set this first part of the year aside for the G.I.S., which I know will be coming, but the planning, it, you know, happened a little bit differently than we thought. And we were hopefully going to be starting in May, working on the Strategic Growth Council Grant. So I actually went on their website, 'cause I hadn't received a notice yet, I'm on their email notice list. And I had to do a little searching, but what I did find out was, they are going to be, uh, discussing findings and recommendations for this round three at their main meeting, as far as I can tell. And it looks like, um, the approved guidelines and solicitation won't be ready till November of two thousand thirteen. Now, I hope that, I printed this out, I got it off the website, and this was dated from February fifteenth, two thousand and thirteen. So I have, I didn't call anyone and ask about it, but that looks to me like the, what's going on. So, rather than not meet and wait until November, I would like to start, um, back to our regular meetings. We had been meeting twice a month, and in addition, when we were doing the grant, we were meeting extra, which was a lot of time, so I'd like to just scale it back to one, um, meeting a month. And Commissioner Luckman was our chair, so I'm gonna miss Marlene or not have her. So, Paul, I know you, you're on the committee, and I know you still travel a lot, but would you, um, wanna be the chair? Or not the chair, but the, the co-chair?
I could probably do that.
'Cause I know a lot of times you'll respond, even if you're out of town, you'll send an email, and you've always got good information. And then, I, I'm just making the suggestion that we could meet, um, on the first Wednesday of the month. We had done that in the past, where we had met the same day as Planning Commission, um, in the afternoon. And then I guess we could actually have another commissioner on board, I think, because we had three of us, so if, if somebody else would like to join us, it might be a good thing, because what I'm thinking is, getting back to the neighborhoods, we were already collecting data, and in addition, um, when we go ahead and do this grant, part of the grant was going to be going into the neighborhoods and doing these little individual charrettes, and doing exactly what we just spoke about. And then, of course, it sounds like we wanted to do a little bit more and start getting into setbacks and what have you. So it may be, um, a good idea if we had one more commissioner.
When do you meet?
Well, so, I didn't bring my calendar, but I guess our, our next meeting would be, uh, the first Wednesday in June, I'm not sure what day that is. Is it June third? June fifth. So that would be June fifth. And I guess, let me, let me ask this to Rob, if, um, or even if we had some commissioners that wanted to rotate, as long as we only, we didn't exceed the three commissioners at a time, is that a possibility?
You can have alternates, just like-
I have an alternate or something, 'cause I'm just thinking, like, if Paul is out of town, and then I could, we could send the email out, excuse me, and get another person?
It's no more than three in any meeting, so-
Right.
So if you have alternates, if somebody's out of town, then you can have somebody else.
We can do that.
Yeah.
Okay, so that might be a, a good thing.
I'd be happy to.
You wanna be part? Oh, good. Okay, so that's great, so-
You know, on that subject, though, you gotta be really careful to not poll and to not distribute. You can distribute information, but you can't, you know, that's-
Right, outside of, and to everyone, I can't do it.
So if you're the alternate, you just, you know, it's kind of incumbent on you to be careful of that, I think.
Okay. Um, so Sherry, actually, and I know we have to send a notice out. So, um, we had been meeting in the past from, um, three to five, and I know with Planning Commission being at six, sometimes that's a little tight, especially if you wanna have dinner or something before we come. So we could go from like three to four-thirty. Paul, what do you think?
Um, yeah, that sounds good. I might suggest that we do, um, a meeting sooner.
We could.
I met with, um, I ran into Greg Grant, and he's got a lot of issues that he'd like to discuss with us, and, because we haven't met in a while.
So, I'm-
And he's got a lot of money that he's gonna be spending on street.
Right, and he's been really, Greg's been wonderful, and so accommodating, and just totally on board with Complete Streets. So, I guess there's two things we could do. We could have just a couple of commissioners from the subcommittee meet with Greg sooner than later, and then we could do our open-to-the-public meeting, um, June fifth. And Paul, I'd be happy to meet with you, if you, um, wanna let us know when you're gonna be around, and we could, um, set something up with Greg.
That would be, um, probably the week of the twentieth to twenty-fourth.
Twenty, twenty-fourth. Okay, I know I have jury, jury duty on the twentieth, and hopefully I won't get on a case, but, um, do you want, do you want me to contact Greg, or do you wanna, I can do it, and find out what his availability is like that week?
Okay, that'd be good.
Okay.
And are you looking for more, uh, public participation?
Yes, thank you, that would be the next thing. So what I will do is, I will send out, um, an email to the people that had been participating in the past, and, um, and then, of course, we're open to the public. So, we meet here at City Hall, and it's, our next meeting will be, uh, June fifth, on a, first Wednesday of the month, from three to four-thirty. So I welcome any members of the public.
I had one comment on the G.I.S. that I forgot to, to mention, we actually had some progress in the last, uh, just the last week or so. Couple things happened, one is that we, the layers that we, we were having a glitch with the machines, they weren't coming up, we got that resolved. The SCAG technician or training, Javier, uh, participated by phone with, I think it was just James Hahn, and he sorted out what our glitch was. So both the computer at Sherry's desk and the one there back, uh, where Kanika used to sit, is, they're, they're both up and running, and then, James and I were talking about the limitations of that computer in the back, and since we're gonna have this assistant planner position, that's where they're gonna be situated. And, the assistant planner position, one of the things I, I noted as a requirement is familiarity with, uh, G.I.S. And as I'm screening applicants, I don't really want somebody with strong G.I.S. skills, and not just somebody that knows what G.I.S. is. So, uh, but in talking over with James, he said that computer's gonna be really a little bit slow, it hasn't, it's, it's, um, hasn't really been utilized at the level, i- it's just, it's, it's older hardware, but he had a few simple upgrades to do to it that were not very costly, that's gonna make it a much better machine than it is now for G.I.S. So the concept with this assistant planners, that's one of their, their main priorities, is, is maintaining the G.I.S., help, helping Sherry get even more familiar with it so that we can use it with our applicants, and then they're gonna have time to do a lot of that data input, that we were thinking an intern might, and that didn't pan out, and the volunteer didn't really, um, glom onto G.I.S., so we have, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, that's one of the, it was a pretty short job description, but one of the salient things is, is somebody with G.I.S. experience.
Anything else before I adjourn the meeting?
So, just to be confirmed, Lawrence is the new member of that, is Complete Streets?
Yes. And then, um, you know, if somebody can't, one of, Paul or Lawrence, if you can't make it, um, you know, let me know. And then I guess what I'll do is I'll let Sherry know, maybe, and she can put out the notice, I guess that would keep it kinda clean. And if somebody else can, wants to show up-
Is there anybody that wants to be like a standing alternate?
That's a good idea.
I think that would be a good idea.
I don't mind showing up, you know, if someone could be there, if it helps out, but I also wouldn't mind if I was busy to have Steve or John or someone else go, so.
Okay, well, maybe, if I, you can let me know, and then I'll let Sherry know, and she could send out a, a notice to the, all the commissioners, and then if somebody can make it, we do that way. Okay?
I would just like to, before we close the meeting officially, thank Commissioner Luckman for her participation as a planning commission, it's been a pleasure for all of us, I'm sure, and, uh, really enjoyed you, and wish you the best of everything.
Thank you. Thank you, I have enjoyed working with each and every one of you. You each bring a special expertise in your own area, and I've learned so much from all of you, so it's been a, just a pleasure.
Anything else? Meeting adjourned.